... meeting to order. It's the July 9th, 2018, regular council meeting. The time is 7:33. Clerk, please take roll call.
I'm here.
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 Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Councilman Soltes.
Here.
Yes, I'm here. Would you please rise if you're able for an invocation to be led by Councilor Grafstein and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
We thank God for having given us the opportunity to meet together here today, and we ask most humbly for a blessing of our gathering. Brighten our eyes with greater understanding, enrich our hearts with compassion and courage, and again receive our gratitude for this opportunity of fellowship. Amen.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Can I please have a motion to appoint Ramona Sanchez as the acting clerk for tonight's meeting? Your Honor? Yes, sir. So moved. Thank you. Can I have a second?
Your Honor.
Ms. Grafstein?
Second.
Any discussion on appointing Ramona Sanchez as acting clerk for tonight? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Mr. Corbett?
Sorry, move under F4 to add an item, sale of property.
That's fine. That's fine for now.
Is that sufficient?
That's fine for now. There's a motion to add to item F4, sale of property. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Grafstein?
Second.
Alright, motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilor Grafstein to add an item to tonight's agenda. Item F4, sale of real estate, or sale of real property. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Any other additions or deletions? Alright, we can go to presentations. This evening, it's a very special evening. I invite the Chief of Police to go over the 2017 Police Department commendations. Chief Haynes, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and esteemed council members. Tonight, the Madison Heights Police Department will recognize the 2017 Police Officer of the Year, Police Department Service Aid of the Year, other officers for their exceptional work during 2017, and a citizen for their actions during 2017. We'll begin tonight's presentation with the Citizens Award. The Citizen Award is a commendation awarded to any individual whose actions resulted in the apprehension of criminals, a life-saving act, or actions that greatly assisted the Department in combating crime. This year, Chaplain Craig Brundage was selected, and he's part of our Chaplain Corps at the Police Department. And on October 18th of 2017, Chaplain Brundage and other members of the Chaplain Corps were at the Police Department for their annual chili cook-off, which everybody truly enjoys. After spending a large portion of his day serving all three shifts on his own time, Chaplain Brundage left the Police Department just after midnight to head home. On his way home, he observed a possible intoxicated driver on Southbound John R. near Ajax, at which time he reported to our dispatch. Chaplain Brundage followed the vehicle to approximately 11 and John R., where our officers located and subsequently stopped the vehicle. The driver was ultimately arrested and charged with operating while intoxicated with a high blood alcohol content. Chaplain Brundage had observed the vehicle driving and swerving several times, striking the curb on John R. And after midnight, he returned to the police station and completed a full written statement regarding his observations, after having already been there most the entire day. It is with great appreciation and respect that I announce that Chaplain Craig Brundage is receiving a commendation plaque for his service to our community and his efforts during this incident.
Thank you, Craig. Great job, thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next award will be for the Police Officer of the Year of 2017. This commendation is awarded to any police officer who has, as a result of diligence and outstanding efforts, been singled out as the Department's Member of the Year in their respective rank. This year, the Police Officer of the Year from 2017 is Officer Jeff Lewis. Officer Lewis began his career with the Madison Heights Police Department on November 3rd of 2000. He's currently the MHPD K-9 handler, a background investigator, field training officer, and an outstanding police officer. During 2017, Officer Lewis was involved in two separate incidents that were also forwarded to the commendation board for review. The first incident occurred when two separate 7-Eleven stores were robbed in the city. Officer Lewis gathered critical information from the first robbery and notified all officers and dispatch of a possible suspect vehicle. Officer Lewis was able to provide updated suspect information by reviewing security video from the first robbery. He relayed that updated information, which led to the arrest of two subjects immediately after the second robbery. During a second incident, Officer Lewis discovered a stolen vehicle in the parking lot of the Days Inn Hotel. Officer Lewis was able to locate the room where the suspect was possibly staying. After Officer Lewis made contact with the suspect, he quickly learned that the suspect was armed with a shotgun, and the suspect barricaded themselves in the room with a child. SWAT was called in, made entry into the room, and secured the suspect, while Officer Lewis removed the shotgun from the room and escorted the child to safety. The suspect was wanted out of Detroit for felony home invasion. He was subsequently charged in our city with felon in possession of a firearm and possession of a firearm during the commission of a felony. Officer Lewis takes pride in his job, has a great attitude, and enjoys his duties as a police officer. He represents the Police Department and the City of Madison Heights in an exemplary manner and is a valuable asset to our city. It is with great pride that I announce Officer Jeff Lewis as the 2017 Police Officer of the Year.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, nice job.
The next award will be for the Police Service Aid of the Year for 2017. This commendation is awarded to any police service aide who has, as a result of diligence and outstanding efforts, been singled out as the Department's Member of the Year in their respective rank. This year's police, or actually 2017's Police Service Aid of the Year is Service Aid David Thayer. Police Service Aid David Thayer began his career with the Madison Heights Police Department on April 29th of 1996. In addition to his role as Police Service Aid, he is also a negotiator assigned to the Southeast Oakland SWAT team and the President of the Police Officers Association. Service Aid Thayer's command officers can always depend on him to perform his job duties with the highest level of efficiency and dedication with minimal supervision. Service Aid Thayer is viewed by his peers as a leader, and his advice is frequently sought on how to handle troublesome calls for service. Service Aid Thayer is an asset to the Madison Heights Police Department, and is with pride that I announce him as the 2017 Police Service Aid of the Year.
Congratulations.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Next award is for the Police Reserve Officer of the Year for 2017. The Reserve Unit currently consists of 18 Reserve Officers. Those closely screened officers complete 125-hour Police Reserve Academy and then receive additional training by riding with experienced Reserve Officers. The primary functions of the Reserve Unit include assisting sworn officers when requested, checking vacation homes, patrolling schools and parks, conducting crowd and traffic control at city and school events, and delivering subpoenas for the Department's Detective Bureau. The 2017 Police Reserve Officer of the Year is Reserve Officer Brian Brooks. Brian was selected as Reserve Officer of the Year for 2017 by his peers. Brian joined the Madison Heights Reserves on January 1st of 2014 after attending the Reserve Police Academy at Oakland Police Academy. He has volunteered over 1,087 hours since he joined the reserves, 258 of which were in 2017. Brian has volunteered to patrol at Madison and Lampfair High School football and basketball games, the Madison Heights Festival in the park and fireworks, and the Memorial Day Parade, along with patrolling the streets, parks, and schools within the City of Madison Heights. Brian is currently an Assistant Platoon Leader and is part of the Reserve Bicycle Unit. It is with deep appreciation that I announce Brian Brooks as the 2017 Police Reserve Officer of the Year.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you.
This commendation may be awarded for services rendered in the line of duty when any member, because of due diligence and perseverance, performs a difficult task in order to prevent a crime, protect life or property, apprehend criminals, or take actions which substantially further the goals of the Department. This year, for 2017, Officer Stephen King is receiving the Meritorious Service Award. On February 7th, 2017, Officer King was dispatched to a robbery call of the 7-Eleven store located at John R. in Whitcomb. The 7-Eleven store at 11 Mile of Hampton had been robbed at gunpoint a short time prior to this robbery. Utilizing information he obtained from Officer Lewis and from Officer Spangler, who was on the scene at the second robbery, Officer King located the suspect vehicle parked in the parking lot behind the 7-Eleven in an apartment complex. The vehicle was unoccupied at the time. As Officer King approached the suspect vehicle, he immediately saw a suspect matching the suspect description given entering the apartment building located at 384 East Whitcomb. Officer King ordered the subject to stop, at which time the suspect looked at him and then ran inside the building. Officer King, on his own, pursued the suspect on foot and entered the apartment building. Officer King heard what he thought were loud footsteps headed up the stairway, and Officer King followed. As Officer King went up the stairway, he observed another male matching the second suspect's description and ordered him to put his hands in the air. The suspect, that particular suspect complied. As Officer King proceeded further up the stairway, he observed the original suspect he was pursuing, and that suspect was refusing to show his hands. Officer King then heard a thud on the ground. It sounded to be close to the second subject's position. Officer King proceeded past the first subject and took the second subject directly into custody. On the floor at the suspect's feet was a black loaded handgun. The other subject remained with his hands in the air until backup arrived, and he was taken into custody. Both subjects were charged with multiple armed, multiple counts of armed robbery. Officer King put his own life in harm's way to protect others and apprehend these dangerous felons. It is with great honor that Officer King is awarded the Meritorious Service Award for this incident.
Thanks, Stephen.
Good job, Mark. Good job.
This commendation may be awarded to any member whose actions are directly responsible for the saving of a human life. These actions must lead to the prolonging of a life to the extent that the victim was released alive into the care of a medical authority who then assumed responsibility. Officers Ashley Blevins and Osmeer Sahuric are the first two, and they'll be accompanied by Officer Edgar Miranda. On December 7th, 2017, Officer Blevins and Officer Sahuric were dispatched to 26085 John R. on a possible drug overdose of two males that were sitting inside a pickup in the parking lot. Upon arrival, the officers found the two males slumped over in the vehicle with the engine running, and they appeared to be unconscious. They also observed uncapped syringes in the passenger's hand and other syringes in the vehicle. Officer Sahuric observed the passenger to be unconscious and barely breathing, and he administered his department-issued Narcan. Officer Blevins observed the driver to have very shallow and labored breathing, and she then administered her department-issued Narcan to the driver. The driver's breathing immediately became stronger, as well as the passengers'. Both suspects were, or both subjects were transported to the hospital, where they were eventually released. Officer Edgar Miranda was dispatched to the roadway inn located at 32703 Stevenson for another possible overdose. Officer Miranda located a male victim on the floor of one of the rooms, who was barely breathing and was already turning blue in color. The male was unresponsive, and Officer Miranda learned through investigation that the male may have overdosed on heroin. Officer Miranda administered his department-issued Narcan to the male with no results. Officer Miranda then administered a second dose to the male and turned the male over to the rescue, who administered a third dose, at which time the suspect began breathing normally, came to, became alert, sat up and began speaking with the officers, and admitting that he had just used illicit drugs. The fire department was able to further check the male, and doctors at St. John's Oakland advised that the subject would later be released. It is with great pride that I am able to issue all three of these officers life-saving awards for their actions during all of these incidents that no doubt saved three human lives.
Thank you, Ashley.
so we can go to meeting open to the public.
Good job. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Great job. Great job, sir. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the Police Department's commendations for 2017.
This is the opportunity for anyone to address city council on any subject.
Mayor Hartwell, members of council, thank you for your time for allowing the Police Department to honor its employees and our citizens for their actions and dedication
It's not required, but it'd be helpful if you could give your name, address, and affiliation,
to our community.
Thank you, Chief Haynes. if any. It reminds us, yeah. And if you'd please be so kind to limit your comments to three minutes or less, and Thank you, Chief Haynes. if you go too far and start repeating yourself, I'll politely ask you to wrap it up. Your presentation and the stories you told about your officers remind us, reminds us But, welcome. civilians how dangerous work in law enforcement is, and how proud and inspired we are that This is the time for meeting open to the public. Please come to the microphone now. Good evening, sir. the men and women under your direction have signed up for this work.
Good evening.
It reminds us of the extensive training and the professionalism it takes for you to do
My name is George Stevens. I live at 28777 Grove Land, Madison Heights.
your jobs well and to keep our city safe. So, thank you for, thank you for bringing these stories to our attention.
Anyway, I'm here to, well, first of all, you should be pleased to be made aware of
Congratulations to everyone who received an award tonight. Thank you.
that the City of Hazel Park continues to fly the rainbow flag, something that they were actually more emboldened to do, and perhaps Madison Heights still isn't quite there yet, to public, because the people that I've talked to, I've been demonstrating in public various places, sometimes in front of City Hall, 12 Mile and John R., about the prospect of Madison Heights having what you would call a gay pride parade. Okay, that might come as a surprise to you, but a lot of things that the council does comes as a surprise to me, okay? Totally blindsided by the, what you would call the Pride Month, okay? And then wearing orange for Gun Awareness Month. You know, I don't need to be preached to by the city council, okay? I have my church, and they give me moral direction. And, and when you read, the city offices were very helpful. They gave me the resolution after it appeared in the CNG newspaper, two days after it was in print. And I, I imagine that the members of the council were probably horrified to see Hazel Park beat you to the punch in the June 6th edition of their newspaper. Hazel Park declared it's Pride Month. Now, number one, as a Bible-believing Christian and as an Orthodox Catholic, we don't use pride at all in that sense. And it's nothing judgmental, but pride is the capital sin, the fountain of all sin. And to say gay, when you think about it, I don't know how the left has a monopoly on the language, and they can totally redefine words. But to the Christian, gay is a word used in Christmas carols. It could be the last name of a lot of individuals, but all of a sudden it means, takes on a whole, complete different meaning. And lesbian, I'm sure is offensive to the inhabitants of the island of lesbus. There is an island of lesbus where this mythology about homosexual women come from. So if bisexuals have to live with the term bisexual, then the other two should have to live with the term homosexual. And you keep adding to the list per, forever, and I don't know what this means, past, present, and future gender identities and so on and so forth, or those that are defined by Facebook. But I can help you. Maybe you can beat Hazel Park to the punch next time, okay? If you don't like using the word homosexual, I prefer to use Disney, okay? Because Disney needs, deserves the credit for being the foremost defender of homosexual marriage, homosexual rights. And we're already at this point here, okay? A Disney duo, a trio, that's a symbol for a bi-trio. This is incest, already legal in New Jersey. This is group marriage, which was shot down by the Supreme Court when the Mormons tried to have that as part of their religion. And this is probably the most disturbing of all, pedophilia, pedi-guy-gal relationships, boys and girls, on the, on the move in England, they're trying, and these are all, you could say, orientations. And like you say, they deserve their dignity, their rights, their freedom, so where do you draw the line? So anyway, I'll be back in two weeks. I'll tell you about how we were assaulted in Hazel Park, the friendly city, when we demonstrated on June 15th. You have not seen it in the CNG newspaper. Andy Kozlowski won't return our calls, but it's on videotape. I was knocked out. I'm still suffering. I haven't been able to get my hair cut even. So, I think I'll wrap it up with that. You've been very generous with my time, but I think the fact that maybe President Trump did not declare this LGBTQ month was maybe part of your motivation. He didn't illuminate the White House in rainbow colors like Obama did. I just think there's some of this latent anti-Christian, because it is anti-Christian. We know John Dewey wanted our school systems to get beyond religious superstition and separate kids from their parents. And Lampfair, number one, is doing a very good job of that, because I had two boys go through that school. But, that's all for tonight. Thanks for hearing me out.
Would anyone else like to address city council? The meeting is still open to the public. No one else is asked to be recognized? Last chance for meeting open to the public? Okay, thank you. We can continue on the agenda to item C. And we have a communication from the acting city manager, and this is the consideration of the credentials for a city manager search firm, and we have representatives from three applicants tonight, but Mrs. Marsh, do you have some opening comments?
So, tonight's city council is scheduled to interview three executive search firms to handle the recruitment for the next city manager. These firms are Amy Sell Talent, GovHR USA, and Strategic Government Resources. These interviews will be handled in alphabetical order, and we would ask for professional courtesy among the other companies that they would please leave the room while the interviews are taking place. So...
Alright. Alphabetical order, Amy Sell Talent would be up first. So, would representatives from GovHR and SGR, if you'd please choose to exit the room? Thanks. We'll allow, and I, we've already spoken with the representatives from the three companies, but we'll allow each company just to have an open floor to discuss any issues they'd like.
When do we speak to the representatives?
When? When they, when they walked in the room tonight. So, each company will...
You have, Mr. Mayor, not the rest of the council.
At 7:30, when we walked into this room, I shook hands with each three of the companies and said, "Welcome to the City of Madison Heights." And you'll have an opportunity to speak, just as staff, a staff report. I didn't write the staff report.
Please don't say that we've all spoken to them. We have.
Okay, great. So, each company will be given an opportunity to say whatever they'd like. It's just, the gavel will be the representative of the companies. And then city council members or staff will have an opportunity just to ask questions, any question that comes to their mind. There's no time limit, and, welcome. Would you please identify yourself?
Sure. Good evening. My name is Amy Sell. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for allowing me to come here. I'm really honored to have the opportunity to be here and interview in the company of two nationally-recognized firms. To try to summarize, I put together a little top 10 list of why I think I should be given consideration for this incredible opportunity and responsibility. Number 10 is my passion for Michigan. I was born and raised in southeast Michigan, have two business degrees from the University of Michigan. I love Michigan and have done my best to support our amazing state through my roles leading talent programs at Ann Arbor Spark and the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, prior to founding my firm in 2015, which focuses on supporting Michigan companies and communities. Number nine, government experience. My exposure to government came early. My dad was elected to city council when I was in fifth grade, and my mother served as mayor of Ann Arbor for eight years. As the senior vice president of, at MEDC, the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, I had a unique insight into the opportunities and challenges of local communities, including funding challenges regarding revenue sharing, economic, and community development. Number eight, going backwards, David Letterman style, is my HR expertise. I and my team have deep human resources and organizational development experience. Through dozens of executive searches and tenures of corporate HR experience, we know that every organization is unique. Leadership style, prior experience, communication preferences, the strategic goals, in this case, what's best for Madison Heights, all are different. We present a slate of highly qualified candidates that will be not only impressive on paper, but will fit the culture and needs of each unique community. We also share our learnings and facilitate the transition for the new person coming in so that they can really hit the ground running. Next is our city manager search process. Even though my experience in city manager searches is less than the other two firms, which I admit, when I did my first search, we developed, designed a city manager process really based on best-in-class processes that were out there. And I honestly believe that we've come up with the best process that we have, which I've detailed in some of the documents that you've been able to see. We strongly recommend the use of a search committee. We listen carefully to council members and staff. We do a community survey to understand the must-have qualities, and we iron out differences of opinion prior to the launch of a search. We create a custom talent rubric for each search that will help guide and evaluate the candidates that come in. We also warranty the search for one year. Next is community engagement. In addition to the search committee and community input survey that we do, we recommend having a community reception with the finalists and allowing all participants to provide input into the finalists. An extensive involvement of community members during the interview process. This involve process ensures that a wide range of perspectives are included and maximizes the trust and transparency of the citizenry in the process. I can tell from watching some of your videos and attending your meetings today that you have a very involved group of citizenry that would appreciate that. We really try to immerse ourselves in the community and listen carefully. Number five is efficient and thorough recruitment. We are recruiting experts. We've done over 400 searches in the last three years. We use the typical government sites, social media, and targeted outreach to network passive candidates. We cyberstalk, reference check, and background check candidates... which I admit, when I did my first search, we developed, designed a city manager process really based on best-in-class processes that were out there. And I honestly believe that we've come up with the best process that we have, which I've detailed in some of the documents that you've been able to see. We strongly recommend the use of a search committee. We listen carefully to council members and staff. We do a community survey to understand the must-have qualities, and we iron out differences of opinion prior to the launch of a search. We create a custom talent rubric for each search that will help guide and evaluate the candidates that come in. We also warranty the search for one year. Next is community engagement. In addition to the search committee and community input survey that we do, we recommend having a community reception with the finalists and allowing all participants to provide input into the finalists. An extensive involvement of community members during the interview process. This involve process ensures that a wide range of perspectives are included and maximizes the trust and transparency of the citizenry in the process. I can tell from watching some of your videos and attending your meetings today that you have a very involved group of citizenry that would appreciate that. We really try to immerse ourselves in the community and listen carefully. Number five is efficient and thorough recruitment. We are recruiting experts. We've done over 400 searches in the last three years. We use the typical government sites, social media, and targeted outreach to network passive candidates. We cyberstalk, reference check, and background check candidates prior to submitting them to the search committee for efficiency. Next is the home team. My team of 14 are all based in southeast Michigan, and we only focus on Michigan organizations. We are passionate about pure Michigan business and community success. Number three is the network. I have over 10,000 LinkedIn connections, and I've been referred to as one of the more connected people in Michigan. This helps me find people from Michigan-based opportunities that others don't necessarily find. I checked out our mutual connections with the City Council members, and not all of you seem to be that actively active, but I found 73 LinkedIn connections in common. Mayor, or Mayor Pro Temblis, we love the way he, like 29 mutual connections. Number two reason for my consideration is the Holland Search Manager process. I've included a detailed timeline in your packet, as well as an article that came out summarizing the search. This search was led over the holidays, and we had a fairly compressed and aggressive timeline. We got over 100 responses from the community in the survey that we did. We had a wonderful search committee that was very broad-based and represented the community. We involved over 30 people from the community in the interviews, as well as council, there were four of the nine search committee members who were City Council members. And then obviously, City Council had the final vote. The search committee found two candidates that they loved to present to the council. So by all means and measure, it was a very positive search, and I recommend that you consider contacting anybody from council or the city, the committee, or Mayor DeBoer or Jen Orm in the city manager's office to learn more about the process. It really went very well, and I actually competed and interviewed against the two firms here tonight to be awarded that search, even though it was my first city manager search. And it went very well, and they were very pleased with the results. And then last, but not least, I am truly a workaholic with a high need for approval. I will be personally responsible for leading the search. I will be your point of contact, and I will directly manage the southeast Michigan team that will be supporting your community. I've grown my firm significantly in three years by providing outstanding service and results, and I'd be honored to work with your community on this opportunity. And I'd be happy to entertain any questions at this time.
Thank you. How many Michigan communities have you worked for?
I've only done one city manager search, and that was for Holland. And that was commenced in November and finished in February. I have been, a few communities have sought me out, including Madison Heights. We're excited about this work, and we plan to do more of it in the future. We hope to do more in the future.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Gavins.
Do you know of any of us, have you ever met any of us in person?
Not prior to tonight.
Okay. Question to you. You said you had a committee. Did you gather people from the community to help you choose a city manager? Is that what I kind of heard?
Yes, I worked with City Council to create a search committee. I based this on a best practice out of the search committee process in Austin, Texas, where they allowed, and so what we did in Holland was four of the nine city council members and mayor were on the search committee, and that everyone that was not on the search committee was able to nominate someone from their area to represent them. In addition, when I was doing my initial interviews with everybody on council, some people expressed an interest to be really involved with the search committee, and some people were happy to not be involved because of time commitments, but they wanted certain perspectives represented on the search committee. After getting nominations for the search committee members from City Council, I talked to the, I made a recommendation back to City Council on who I thought should be selected based on their input. It was City Council's decision. So City Council would play a very key role, one in the upfront interviews, nominating who should be on the search committee, and would be involved with the interviews of candidates, and would also ultimately approve the council member, the city manager candidate. It's a process that not all city manager searches follow, but I believe that it provides an excellent result and do advocate for it, based on my experience in Holland, which is a similar-sized community, as well as I think it's a national best practice. And if you, I just, you know, the more input that you get, and the more involved you can get people, and some city council members are extremely busy and don't have the extra time to get involved, but they want to maintain their control, it works out very well and can move the process along. I think it's a little bit more time upfront, but I think it's worth the investment.
Thank you, Amy.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Another question, Mr. Bliss?
Yes, so you had mentioned that you utilize social media. I assume you're, you have a recruiter set up on LinkedIn, you're doing in-mails. What else do you do utilizing social media?
We use Facebook, Twitter, and LinkedIn. I have a LinkedIn, I have a network that I've cultivated primarily through LinkedIn of city managers around the country, of about 200 city managers that I will network with to promote the opportunity and to find candidates that would be successful. There are a few websites, the, there's a City County Managers Association that provides an excellent pool of candidates. There's a few other Michigan-based websites that are helpful. But I find that reaching out directly to an entire network and making lots of new friends on LinkedIn that would be in positions to know good candidates is the best way to recruit in this highly competitive market.
Your Honor, may I continue?
Please.
So you'd mentioned LinkedIn, Twitter, and Facebook. Could you just really briefly, 20 seconds apiece, tell me how you would utilize each of those platforms to find passive candidates in the search?
LinkedIn is by far the best for that, because you can go and sort by qualifications, credentials, and current titles. So finding city managers and assistant city managers or deputy directors that would be good people to network with, and then sending them an email and reaching out to them to ask them if they're interested, or if they even know of anybody that would be interested when we're marketing the position, is absolutely key. I do have a Twitter account that I use to promote postings. We have a newsletter that we send out from our company to search, but for such a targeted group, I would rely on specifically finding the people that we thought would be best through LinkedIn and reaching out to them, as well as using the regular job boards.
Okay, so no advertising?
Well, we, there's, there's paid fees that, on many of the job boards, that we would use. We also use ZipRecruiter, and Indeed, and Monster, the State Labor Exchange, MI Talent, Pure Michigan Talent Connect, which is actually a tool that I implemented when I was at the state, are also good sources of candidates.
Your Honor, if I may, one more question?
Please.
In the City of Holland search, it looks like they had 60 applications for the position.
Yeah.
That's your most recent and your only example, so maybe you could give me the breakdown of how many of those were organically sourced, just simply because they were interested in the City of Holland position? What percentage of those were passive candidates that you sourced? And then what percentage of them came from your advertising?
Oh, gosh. Well, in addition, when we did the community survey, many people nominated candidates that they thought would be good fits, and we reached out to all of those candidates that had been nominated. I know one of the finalists was recommended to me directly by a citizen. So maybe, maybe five persons, five of the 60 were from nominations. Probably another 10 were from national job boards. Probably another 10 were from in-state job boards. And probably 20 were from the ICCMA website, would be my guess. And then the balance of that, so maybe another 10, not doing my math right, would have been from some of the outreach that we did. And then referrals, and sometimes it's hard to tell, because when you kind of send out an email networking, sometimes they will send it out to their network, and it's hard to know the exact source of where the candidate might have come from.
So you said one of the two finalists were recommended by a citizen. What was the other one?
And actually, the other, the other final finalist was recommended by numerous internal, numerous people within the community as well. The, the successful candidate was, he was with the local government, state, local county and a Holland resident. So he definitely had a lot of connections there as well. And then the third person, I think, was the third kind of semifinalist that made it to onsite interviews but was not recommended by the search committee. I believe she was, she, I emailed her about the position, but she might have seen it on the ICCMA website. I'm not positive.
So none of the three were from direct sourcing from your passive, from sourcing passive candidates? None of the three finalists?
I, well, I think the third one might have been from an email that I had sent to her.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
I, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for coming tonight. I just wanted to mention, you had put a reliance, and I guess it depends on how you define committee, but strictly speaking, we are prohibited under Charter from having committees of council. Pretty much, we go as a group.
Oh, okay.
And I'm not sure that some sort of a hybrid I would be necessarily comfortable with, but what, what are some of the alternatives? If you couldn't have three members of council sitting with you at a, at an interview, what alternates can we do to get to where we need to get?
So an alternative would be to rely on community input. The key aspect of a search committee is to help provide additional input into refining the job posting. However, I'd be gathering most of that data through my interviews with city staff and city council members, as well as if we did the community input survey, then that would provide some additional feedback. When I collate that all and come back, I could present that directly to council. And then during the interview phase, it would be easy for all council members to identify multiple people to be involved with the interviews, so that we could still get that broad representation of interviews. And then we would consolidate the feedback and present it directly to council.
I think, I think in this situation where, where the spotlight is on and everything is taking place in the, in public, I think the emphasis would be on your interaction with the council, coming to understand individually and collectively our interests, our, and can you just talk a little bit about how you tease out from the group our, our thinking on the issue?
Sure. Well, this, one of the first things I do is schedule a half hour to 60-minute interview individually with each council member, to learn more about their ideal city manager candidate, what the strengths of past city managers have been that they've worked with or are aware of, where there might be, where they might see future opportunities or needs, learning about the strategic direction and priorities that are facing Madison Heights now and in the future, and getting our key things to learn from City Council. It's also for me, it's very important for me to also talk to as many staff members within City Hall as possible, to understand, get a sense for the culture, for the leadership style, attributes that are successful or that could be problematic within a, within a group. That kind of leadership style and fit is key. Also, understanding the organizational issues. Is there going to be a lot of retirements happening so that a team is going to need to rebuild? Are there other challenges where competencies might need to be bolstered? Are there specific experiences that are absolutely key? In Holland, they manage a utility. There's some demographic shifts. There's a need for, there were needs for cultural sensitivity and to do some rebuilding after a lot of cost-cutting had happened. So we looked for somebody that had very good emotional intelligence, had a, what they call a servant leadership style, someone that is very approachable, agreeable. The ship was running pretty well, so they, they wanted to make sure that they had someone that was going to be able to maintain a lot of the good things, but provide some additional development support to a relatively young leadership team. There had been a lot of turnover, and they needed to be a little bit more supportive in some of the communication issues. There was kind of a better path forward that the, that everyone collectively thought would be more effective. So a lot of those learnings, we understood, I understood by talking to about 25 people, and then really understanding what needs to happen. And through those conversations, I put together what I call this talent rubric, where I look at what are the must-haves that this candidate must, must have, and that what are some ideal issues, but everybody feels comfortable. And for me, it's really important, if it was going to be working specifically with council, that I have a clear understanding of what is absolutely required. For instance, if being a former city manager is absolutely required, then I want to know that as opposed to an assistant city manager at a larger area, or a department director, or something else, or, you know, prior experience managing a police department, for instance. Whatever those absolute must-haves are, it's good for a recruiter to know about, so that I don't, we don't get to the finish line, and then I present to you someone that doesn't have something that, that is a deal-breaker for, for a key decision-maker. One of the most difficult, one thing that you will probably hear tonight is that we will, you know, the recruiters will post on the same boards, they'll present to you the same candidates. And I've, I've heard, you know, and what is unique, though, is when I got 60 candidates for Holland, when Grand Rapids got 61 candidates, when South Lion got, in a search that's going on right now, got 30 candidates. These are the candidates that are going to the search committee before they ever come to council or a, a search committee. And it's really important for the recruiter, the executive search consultant, to understand and make the right decision about who to present, because they're going to narrow it down to three to five to seven candidates. And if they choose somebody that might look really good on paper, but doesn't have all of the key attributes to fit the culture and fit the requirements that each of the individual decision-makers have, you know, it can really slow down the process and become problematic. There was, at the same time I was doing a search in Holland, there was a search going on in Grand Rapids, and they had 61 candidates. The search committee presented, search consultant presented five to City Council, and none of them were selected. And they had to redo the search and hire a different firm. So I'm going on a little bit, but I do think that that upfront involvement and understanding of the key priorities is absolutely critical.
Thank you, Mr. Corbett. About how many hours of work does it take for a typical manager's search on your end?
On my end, probably about 300.
About 300 hours of work?
And I have, in my last search, I had, there were three of us that were involved with it, and we had different times when we were more intensely working. You know, the upfront part is significant and key. Then there's the sourcing and screening and pre-interviewing, and then facilitating the meetings to make sure we get to a good process. When we had our onsite interview, we had three people and 30 interviews, interviewers, as well as a reception that evening. So that's, again, pretty, pretty time-intensive, but I think provides a nice input and involvement of the community, as well as multifaceted input.
Excuse me? Yes, Mrs. Scott.
May I call you Amy?
Sure.
Thank you. I'm Margene Scott.
Nice to meet you.
Since you've reviewed our credentials, you probably know enough about me to answer the question, what do you do when you have a council who does not agree on what their city manager is to be and what they're looking for and what they're expecting in a city manager? How do you handle that situation?
That's where I like to, you know, peel the onion or learn more about what everybody can agree on. The, in Holland, there was, there were kind of two factions, and, but they, when we, when we got down to it, they all agreed on the core issues that were involved. There was some tension and frustration and fear that things were going to go one way or another. But that's where I think my organizational development background and just experience in a variety of situations can come into play, because I definitely, you know, understand the need for different perspectives, but also can usually bring those things together and identify the common ground to make sure that there's an agreement of what the core attributes are that's going to be best for Madison Heights. And if there is clearly one issue that one person demands a master's, and one person does not want a master's degree, you know, then that's where we have that conversation and try to come to a resolution about a specific aspect. Again, and have those conversations upfront and have that discussion upfront, so that we're not having it, you know, after we've put in all that time and effort. But that's, again, why I really believe that deep knowledge about, and having one-on-one conversations with everybody to get at what those issues are and addressing upfront is critical.
Have you read our city charter yet?
I have not read the city charter completely. I started... I have not read the city charter completely. I started reading the budget, and it was three hundred and seventy-one pages, I believe, so I did not read all of that. Um, but there's more due diligence for me to do, for sure.
When you are considering city managers, do you follow the city charter exactly? Do you feel that's important?
I do feel that working very closely with your city attorney, um, and city staff is critical, um, to make sure that I, that I, um, work in tandem with the nuances. When I was doing the Holland search, um, Jen Orm, the HR manager, and I were kind of joined at the hip, working about different things, managing some of the internal issues involving suggestions from, that were coming to her team about different aspects. So, um, I love, I, I know I don't know it all. I love to learn. I know every community's unique, and partnering and making sure that I'm not making a mistake by being careful is, is something that I, I take to heart.
All right. And you have a team of fourteen people that assist you?
I do.
And do they do any interviewing or work like you do, or are you the main force of your company?
Um, I'm definitely, I would say the main force, although I have a number of people with master's degrees in human resources and extensive recruiting experience. Um, I would be your main point of contact. I would be doing all the initial upfront interviewing. I would be drafting the talent rubric. I would be facilitating every meeting that we have together and presenting. Um, I would be involving other people on my team to do some of the initial interviewing of candidates and vetting of candidates and point of contacting and of the candidates scheduling, assisting me onsite during the interviews and putting together some of the logistics. Uh, but I would be your main point of contact. But there's, there's a lot that has to be done in a compressed timeframe, and so, uh, yes, I need, need good people to work with.
The people that assist you, are they all from Michigan?
They all live in Michigan right now. I do have a diverse team. Uh, I have people that initially were born in, were born in, um, Germany, um, Antigua, and India. So, I, they were not, they're not, not all native Michiganders, but they all currently live in southeast Michigan. My office is in Ypsilanti, Michigan. A few of us live, the staff lives in Ypsilanti, Canton, and Pittsfield Township, and Ann Arbor, Michigan.
So, will we be, um, assessed the, um, mileage, for instance, for people that are traveling here?
No. The, the fee includes all of my, all expenses. Um, the only thing that's additional would be, um, for candidates that would be brought onsite, um, their travel costs are not included, and the reception, um, which I suggest we have, um, food and venue costs would not be included. But my fee is all-inclusive, and there is a one-year guarantee on that as well, so that there's not another fee for one year should the search not work out, but we hope that.
You also mentioned that sometimes you'll survey, is that our option, survey the community?
Yes.
And who would you survey? How would you pick those individuals you're talking to?
We would broadly put it out. So, what we did in Holland was we had a press release, and we put it on the city's Facebook pages, and tried to promote it and push it out. So, we don't, um, you know, do like a, a specific scientifically valid survey. It's more of an input survey, and then we carefully review those, the comments and feedback. There's an opportunity for people to nominate other members, or, um, and then we try to find them and reach out to them if they, if they are nominated by members of the community as well.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions from city council members? All right, Amy, do you have any final thoughts, any final remarks? I appreciate your presentation.
Okay. Well, I really appreciate the, the opportunity to be here. I'm, I know you have two really great firms coming up that have much more experience than I do, and I'm just very, um, appreciative to have the opportunity to present to you what I think I could do to help your community. Thank you again.
Thank you. Could someone please invite a representative from the next company? That would be GovHRUSA. They're next because they're next alphabetically. Welcome to Madison Heights. Uh, you are the second applicant to speak to us tonight out of three. So, if, um, I'll tell you what we told the others, the other, is that you can begin with just, uh, open format. Whatever you'd like to say or present to us, the floor is yours, unlimited time. And then when you feel you're finished with your presentation, um, I'll invite questions from other members of the city council, and I'd ask that you would, uh, answer them as, uh, quickly and honestly as you can, and then I'll invite you to make any closing comments after. As you noticed, the first applicant, it took about thirty minutes, but there's no rule to this. We could get through five minutes or five hours, who knows? Um, but welcome, so if you could please identify yourself and your affiliation, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. It's our pleasure to be here tonight. Um, my name is Heidi Voorhees, and along with Joelle and Earl, I co-own GovHRUSA, and I'm joined here tonight by James Patrino. Uh, our firm is a national firm. We've worked in twenty-nine different states, but we believe we have a local focus, and James is going to tell you more about that. Uh, we are headquartered in Northbrook, Illinois. Uh, we've conducted approximately four hundred and fifty different recruitment and selection processes since our inception. Um, we have approximately twenty-eight percent of our business is repeat business, which we think is the best form of endorsement, and about forty-six percent of that is two or more recruitments. So, we, we feel that our clients are very satisfied. They invite us back, and we have a strong track record in that area. So, I'm going to turn this over to James Patrino, who is our, our Michigan, one of our Michigan consultants, and he is going to tell you about our process, and we're both available to answer any questions.
Good evening, Heidi. Um, we've provided you some information, um, and I'll just, if you open your folder, can tell you what's in the folder, and then I'll go through, um, one of the documents. It's planned as a PowerPoint, but I can just go through it, um, as kind of a guide and present to, uh, GovHRUSA. So, on your right, on your left side, you've got our Kent County brochure, which is just an example of the type of recruitment brochure that we'll put together for the community, um, and sending it to candidates that we both have tracked through our systems and through other searches. And I think that's an important point, because of the number of city manager searches that we're, uh, doing nationally and in Michigan. Uh, we have an opportunity to send this directly to those candidates. Um, also, we use a targeting methodology, uh, that GovHR uses for identifying candidates that we think are potentially of interest to them. So, those are important points that go beyond kind of the standard complications that, that we could place this, we add in. Um, also, we describe our recruitment, um, and staffing services with a small brochure on that side. On the right side, um, you've got the presentation, our cards, as well as a list of all the municipalities that we've assisted in recruitment. Um, kind of going through the, the presentation on that right side, um, starting with our philosophy. So, service integrity, trust, and respect, those are words that you'll, you'll often hear, but at, at GovHR, um, we really value our partnership with our community. Um, you'll hear Heidi talk or me talk, and throughout the process, this is your city manager's search, and we will refine our process. We will work with you very closely. Uh, we don't have a cookie cutter process. We have a process that I will talk about today that goes through a very systematic, um, phases for the process, but if you have very specific goals for citizen engagement, citizen participation, um, service groups, stakeholders, however you think in your community you'd like to bring folks to the, to this table and talk about the qualifications of the city manager, um, we are very open to adjusting that process, also involving you in different levels of review of the candidates. Uh, these aren't preset at GovHR. We really work with you on the front end to, to help define those. Um, our, our experience, Heidi touched on it very briefly. Um, basically, we are in many states, and the model here works quite well, especially, I think, in Michigan. Um, we're on the vice president for GovHR here in the state of Michigan. I was a city manager for seventeen years. Just prior to joining GovHR, I was a city manager in Rochester, um, right up the road. I grew up at Fourteen Mile in Dequindre, so not quite Madison Heights, but I could almost throw a football if I could throw it really, really well, um, into Madison Heights. Um, having that local knowledge, understanding pension issues in our state, heavily issues in our state, issues that have to do with, um, medical marijuana and things that are changing rapidly in our community, I think it provides us an opportunity to both understand the candidates that are, are going to come and the questions that may be best asked of them, as well as advise council as, in terms of the fit for these candidates, whether they're local Michigan candidates or the, from outside, because we would consider this a national search, but I hope our local, local flavor with it, with a national firm. Uh, I think it sets us apart, and we've had a lot of success, essentially, using that combination of Heidi's two hundred and fifty searches across the country, and then my recent city manager experience, uh, here in Oakland County. Um, our next is just a couple of recent searches that we've done, or, or searches that we consider similar to Madison Heights. Uh, Kent County, Michigan, Grand Rapids, Normal, Illinois, Cambridge, Massachusetts, um, and then the way that I got affiliated with GovHR was they actually found my replacement when I left the city of Rochester. Um, the process they used and that I was able to be a part of to find my successor when I left the city in two thousand fifteen convinced me that, that they were a firm that I thought, really, I would like to be a part of, um, if, if I had an opportunity to help, uh, communities with the city manager searches or other department head searches. Um, a little bio, usually you start with that, but I guess I buried it deeper in the PowerPoint. Um, I'm a Michigan native, seventeen year career as a city manager. Uh, right now, I'm also a professor at Rochester College and adjunct at Oakland University, um, Oakland University in their MPA department, Rochester College in organizational behavior and social enterprise. That was where, that's what I had left, uh, the city of Rochester to pursue, um, that academic, but I'm also given the opportunity to stay connected with municipalities, um, as a consultant assisting with these searches. Um, and I've found that it, it's been a really nice opportunity to both stay involved academically, um, particularly in the MPA program, and understand some of the skills that our students are learning, as well as stay involved with the searches and help communities make that marriage between the candidate and the needs of the community. Again, we use a tailored process, um, but I'll step through kind of where we start with every one of our searches. Um, we'll do an organizational assessment and stakeholder interview. So, I would come back to the community. I would interview all of you individually. I'd interview stakeholders, the department heads that you've identified, to try and get the best, um, understanding of the culture, as well as the issues, the opportunities, uh, challenges in the community, and what you would like to see in your next manager, the skills, um, the management skills and the traits that you would value. Um, obviously, I know the area well, but you're going to be able to bring me, um, a better understanding of the culture and the individual that you would like to see come to this community. Um, we will then develop our recruitment brochure, as well as our advertisement. Um, we do use, you know, a number of different avenues for advertising, um, the standard MML, ICMA, also, University Network. We're very strong both in recruiting minorities and female candidates, and making sure that everyone has an opportunity to have the information and make the decision if they would like to apply, if they think this is a fit. Um, it's something that both Heidi and Joelle is really advocating, and are actually presenters on the national level in that, in those cases. Um, we will then have the, um, recruitment of the candidates. This will be done through phone calls, through answering the ads, both by the, uh, folks in Chicago with their network, as well as myself and the network I have in Michigan. Um, we will review, I will personally review every single application that comes in, um, and give it a ranking, and decide, based on the criteria that the council set earlier, um, which candidates are the best fit for your community. I will ring back, um, if this number does not fit, if you would discuss how you would like to see in resume form. Maybe it's ten, maybe it's twelve, and we would have a close, I would suggest in a closed session meeting, which is, um, available to us under Michigan Open Meetings, um, to just review those resumes. By that time, I would have Skype interviewed every one of those individuals that I'm presenting in resume form. I would have reviewed their resume. We would have done a social media and a Google search on them, and in that closed session, we can discuss the content of their resume, as well as some of the discussions I've had with them. So, we can have a very honest conversation about the candidates, that dozen candidates, if you have downstream numbers you'd like to review publicly. At that point, it switches to an entirely public process, uh, of the interviews of those candidates. Um, we would use a, at that point, whether you'd like to involve stakeholders or if you just like to do a first round interview of six or so candidates, we can limit it down to three or so, and then do a larger stakeholder process. Um, a lot of that depends on conversations. I don't want to predetermine any of these numbers or the process. I want to work with you on that stakeholder part, that very first part, but in the standard process, that's usually the numbers that we see, um, go forward to each round. The final three, or whatever final number we come with, we'll do a full background check, um, as part of this search, criminal, educational background, et cetera, um, to make sure that our finalists are the best candidates that we think they are. Um, we also offer personality testing and other, um, uh, further examination of the candidates that we can review as an additional services, if you desire, you know, to take that one step further with your finalists. Obviously, we'll facilitate the process through the entire, um, phases that I've mentioned, and then assist in negotiating the contract. More B of the go-between is probably the best way to explain it, um, between the council and the candidate. We're not done until the coun, the candidate is here and you're satisfied with the candidate. Even at that point, um, we're not finished until you continue to be satisfied with that candidate. Uh, we do offer a guarantee with our placements, and that's something that's important to us so that we make the best match for the community, and it's not just getting this project done, but in fact, that candidate will be with you for several years to come. The, our commitment, or my commitment and Heidi's commitment, is me as the lead and Heidi as supporting this search, we would be open to you throughout the entire process, cell phone, uh, Skype conversations, however you would like to engage us. Again, I do this, just like when I was a city manager, I do this at my service to the council members throughout the process, whatever we can do to help facilitate. Um, in most of my searches, I say I, I want to read things. Obviously, a really good fit manager of the process that is involved in the community and engagement accepted with the community, and a really well facilitated process that brings the council together and through. Um, those are the, the things that I strive for in the searches. Uh, but throughout, we represent Madison Heights. We will, uh, communicate with the candidates, both thanking them for their participation, following up after the process, informing them of the process, how it was facilitated in the final rounds, and who the actual candidate was. We believe that developing our candidate pool, treating them with respect, and making sure that they're aware of the, the final selection is a important way to stay involved with the candidates, both for Madison Heights and the respect that they'll have for your community, as well as for our profession. I'll wrap and let Heidi, uh, bring together a few points that I made. Um, I think that the difference between GovHR and other firms that we've had an opportunity to, um, work alongside would be our national exposure with our local, um, managers, former managers, in this case me, that really who am the best for both roles. Um, I've probably hit that point a couple of times, which you can tell that's something I'm pretty passionate about, um, both being a former city manager, understanding from that side of the table, now really working with these candidates, and bringing the one that fits the most, um, of your needs here in, uh, in Michigan. We are committed to diversity and our knowledge of the profession, and it is an improvement to our individuals, uh, throughout the process. I think we, we often participate at ICMA and MLL conferences, um, to try and continue to improve our profession and improve the city manager, um, knowledge base that we have to recruit candidates from. candidates from. Finally, we hope we have the opportunity to be happy to answer any questions that you have and Heidi will provide you with some more information from, from the program.
Thank you, Heidi, thank you, James.
I just have a couple of quick things I also wanted to mention, points I wanted to make. We have also, if you chose to, through the community, if you wanted to have a community engagement process, we have used with other clients, a variety of survey documents that can, we can use for outreach purposes. We facilitated focus groups, we've had public meetings, so those are all options that are included within our proposal. We are also in the process of partnering with a little more sophisticated survey research organization that does, that parses the data according to voter registration rolls and all kinds of other interesting details, so we're having conversations with them, but we have done this quite a bit and are very comfortable with it. We also use social media heavily, LinkedIn, Twitter, Instagram, Facebook, to continue to push it out. LinkedIn is particularly useful for us in sourcing candidates, because people are on it who may not even know they're looking for a job and then this pops up and, and they see it and it's another way for us to capture folks. We subscribe to a database that we pay to belong to that updates quarterly and it gives us the email addresses of all of the city managers in the country, so we can say, you know, we want to, we want to email for every city manager in the country between, populations between, you know, twenty and seventy-five thousand and do a blast email that way. So that's all in addition to our personal contact with folks. And finally, it is just to further explain your participation in the process, if you decided you wanted to have access to the resumes, we can make that happen. Either we've had, some of our clients have wanted them all in a Dropbox so that they can see all of the resumes, we're not gatekeepers, we're fine with you doing that, we'll prepare a matrix that gives you comparative assessment of each of the candidates and, but you can also have real-time access and we can make that happen for you as well, if that's something that you're interested in. And then finally, the last initiative that we've used with some of our clients is video interviewing. If you decided you wanted to see, you know, the candidates answer two or three questions, we can arrange for that and you can make that a part of your decision-making process with respect to who you invite for an interview. So those are just some of the other elements of the recruitment process that are available.
Well, thank you very much. I guess we'll open it up for questions. The first question I would have for either one of you is, how many Michigan cities have you recruited a city manager position for?
Yeah, well, we've been working in, we're, it's kind of interesting, we're kind of smiling because we're working quite a bit in Michigan right now. We're working in East Point and Alvin, Troy, Adrian, Troy. We're in Troy today, so our business has been picking up, but we have also worked in Kent County and Rochester Hills, Rochester.
And all of those over the last couple of years.
And you, I saw in your written materials, I'd like you to talk about a warranty. Could you please explain how the warranty could be used?
Sure. It's a two-year guarantee if the candidate leaves for any reason, or you ask the candidate to leave for any reason, and we mean any reason, we will come back and do the recruitment for just the expenses, so we would waive the consulting fee, so it would just be advertising expenses and any travel expenses, which would be minimal because James is nearby.
Thanks. City Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Geddings.
Have either of you met any of us on council before?
I have not.
I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you, folks.
If you look at faces, I'm sure we've passed at MML conferences, but I'm not sure that we've ever met anyone.
Thank you, both of yous.
Your Honor. Mr. Bliss, thank you.
If I may have a couple of minutes. So the first question I have, so you listed the work that you have done or are doing in Michigan, how many of those, and you could name them if you'd like, but how many of those are ongoing right now? I know you'd mentioned Troy and East Point, I believe those are active searches right now. How many are completed with city managers that you have put in place in the state of Michigan?
Kent County and Rochester, that would be it, I think, at this point. The others are underway.
Okay, and then the, the others underway right now, so, so you named off a lot of them, those cities would also be in competition for the same candidates that we're trying to attract, so how would you balance that?
I think, and this happens a lot, because we do a lot of work in Illinois as well, so we run across this. You would think that, that may be true, there may be some overlap, but more often than not, you're all, you're looking for different things than, than some of the other towns and unless somebody is, you know, you might have a candidate who's actively looking and may apply to one or more places, but really, we find people feel strongly about a particular community and that's kind of what they focus on. So we don't see a lot of overlap when that happens in Illinois and it does happen quite a bit.
Is it different, is it different staff that, and key folks in the search process?
In this case, there's three of us that are working right now in Michigan.
Yeah, not necessarily. It could be that six, seven, eight candidates. And I guess I would share that, you know, if a candidate is interested in applying to Madison Heights and is going to Troy, they're going to apply to all of the, regardless of the search firm that's doing each of those individual things. And it could be that it's a highly qualified candidate that constitutes a community that we bring into all the city councils as a candidate that we think would be a strong fit. At the point that we're delivering our, our message or our folks, those are fed into the city council decision who we would like to interview and who we have that interview would make a pitch to the candidate. So from my perspective, there's no, there's no steel picket incentive, they're going likely to apply regardless of the search.
So that, that's with applications, let's talk about passive candidates that you're recruiting. If you find a passive candidate within our search, are you prohibited from sharing that same passive candidate that you've located with our neighbors?
Well, they would know, I mean, it's, they would know about the other opportunities, you know, if they're, if they're.
If they're actively looking, but if they're passively looking and you find them specifically for ours, are you contractually prohibited from?
No, we think, oh, no, no.
Not contractually, but certainly wouldn't share that candidate. If they, if they reach out, if they're supposed to reach out to the city and ask for Madison Heights and they have interest, they have a good post, they would issue your system and your file and that's anything we would recruit.
Okay, now, you listed four examples in the presentation you gave us, Kent County, Normal, Illinois, Cambridge, Massachusetts and Rochester, Michigan. Why did you pick these as the best examples for us?
I think just, we were just looking at some of the more recent, we were looking for recent recruitments as well as some Michigan recruitments, it was just a combination.
So not like similar size or demographic information?
Normal is probably, it's a little larger, but not much, it's probably a very similar size.
Okay, so in, in the search in, in Normal, and that looks like fairly recent, that's seventeen, eighteen, how many applications did you have for that position?
That one was a little lower, it was probably, I think, thirty-eight to forty candidates applied. I will note that they had a strong internal candidate that had been there for the, with the city for a long time and she was sort of seen as the heir apparent, so a number of people who were thinking about it didn't go forward because they thought she would get the job and she did.
Okay.
So that can make it a little more complicated.
So of, of the forty, how, how many of them had applied versus were passive candidates that you directly sourced? Just off the top of your head, just for a second.
Maybe half, you know, half, I mean, of the ones that they interviewed, there was probably half that I've contacted. Now, of the ones that applied, I wouldn't know. You know, I, I can say that, you know, of the final most qualified group of, I think it was eight to ten that I presented, it was probably half and half.
Okay, and just two more questions, Your Honor. Of, of those passive candidates, how, how do you find them? I know you'd mentioned you have an email list, how do you aggressively target those passive candidates who would meet criteria that you found from talking to members of council?
Well, we spend a lot of, we're at conferences, I'm going to be at the MME conference next week, we go to, we use those email lists, but really, we use LinkedIn, I use LinkedIn a lot, because I don't always like, I don't like to call people at their place of work, I think it's more appropriate to reach out to them and I don't, you know, I think that's the, probably the most professional way to get people and so, and I just went through this process for a finance director recruitment, just, you know, contact them on LinkedIn, I'm working on this recruitment, I think it's something you might be interested in and our response rate that way is at like ninety-nine percent, people either say yes or no, and it's very effective. So that way, or, you know, just, if there's, if I have their cell phone and I can call them in off-hours, I'll do that, you know, that, there's a whole wide variety of ways to.
And I think that the passive candidate, once we put out the advertisements, that kind of, that's, okay, we have our contact information, there's, how long do you make calls from city managers locally that I have with that, and say, hey, I'm not interested, but so-and-so you may want to reach out to. And so whether that contact is being, or another search that I may interrupt, or they have some relationship with Madison Heights, or Madison, or back of the house, I mean, back of, now, that's information that often, you know, city managers are looking at these, at these advertisements and if they're comfortable with the, with the search consultant, that if somebody that they trust and somebody that they're willing to reach out to, we'll get those calls, I think that, that has happened, that I've worked with.
Okay, and, and my last question, you mentioned advertisements, so how, what do you do as far as advertising and is that cost included in, in what you've quoted us?
It's in the proposal, it's, it's called out separately, it's probably a twenty-five-hundred dollar, that's a twenty-five-hundred dollar figure that we have found most of our, and we can provide you with a list of the places and the costs that you can approve if you'd like to do that, but that's about where it ends up.
So mostly banner ads, social media?
It's LinkedIn, it's going to be International City and County Management Association, the state associations in this area, we would recommend NFBPA, the National Forum for Black Public Administrators, the Local Government Hispanic Network. We advertise with our competitors, Strategic Government Resources is coming up next, they have a job board, we put it there as well as on ours. We really believe in giving it as wide of, of a, of cast, cast as wide a net as possible, so it adds up to about twenty-five hundred dollars.
Well, thank you very much, I know it's.
There's one thing I would like to mention if I could, because we show Grand Rapids as a, as a city manager client on here and we did work with the city of Grand Rapids in the last year on their process, they did not select, they didn't end up selecting a candidate during the time that we worked with them, so I wanted to be clear, we didn't, James and I didn't talk about it because it was not a completed process and they have elected to work with a different search firm. But the mayor did give us a letter of recommendation, she felt that we did everything that they asked us to do and if you read the media reports, the council members said the exact same thing. So there was, it was a complicated recruitment process, but I do want you to know, if you have a question about it, we can provide you with the mayor's letter or you're welcome to call her.
I understand that you work on a flat rate, but approximately, how many hours do you think your firm will put in to this?
We estimate a hundred and seventy-five hours between the consultant's time and the administrative time, and the administrative time is do, placing, doing the, putting the ads in all of the different locations. We also have reference specialists that do reference calling, when we present candidates to you, we will have called at least two references for each of them and then we continue to do more references. They maintain, the, our recruitment coordinator maintains the database, but we're the only, James or I would be the only people you would see, you know, all of those, it's administrative and back-of-the-house folks on the seventy-five hours, so that's our general estimate and then a hundred hours for the consultant's time.
Your Honor?
Yes, please. So I graduated from Oakland University, the MPA, what, what did you teach?
Budget.
Budget?
Yeah, government budgeting.
Okay. I think I had the elections director, what was his name? I can't think of his name. But anyhow, so then you, you said you went, feedback. So what about your success ratio? I mean, when you placed a city manager in these various areas, do they stay long? Are they still there?
We are, we're actually in the process of developing that data to find, we're going back and finding out what the average tenure is. I can tell you that our, less than two percent of the time, our guarantee is invoked, so we feel very good about that, we know that we have a high success rate, but I can't get, I can't say if it's five years or seven years, we're working on that data right now.
Just offhand, Hamtramck, was that, how was that?
Sure. We worked through the Hamtramck recruitment, we brought a candidate, they ultimately decided to put a pause on their process. They have very unique charter provisions that require the manager to have managed communities of populations greater than ten thousand people for more than three years and that language combined with some of the other charter language really constrain the candidates that they could interview. So they put a pause on it, they have decided that they are going to work through a charter amendment and then we told them that we will hold our pricing, we will hold our process and we will come back and complete the process if they wish, once they complete their charter amendment.
It looks like you did Grand Rapids, which is a pretty large city, how did that work out?
Well, that's what I was just referencing, where we worked with them in the last year and we brought forward several candidates that they did interview in a public setting, they could not come to a consensus on any of the candidates, so they decided to start the process over. They are using a different recruitment firm, but we do have a letter of recommendation from the mayor and I think if you read the news reports, the comments were positive from the aldermen about the work that we did for them.
And you said you had the, you have the Troy contract with city manager?
Correct.
So I assume you know the history, recent history, so what would you do differently to prevent what happened there?
Certainly, knowing what we know now, we've talked with Troy about ways that they would ask additional background checks and potentially using some of the other tools that I mentioned earlier, like personality testing and those are the things we would do to try and bring a candidate that wouldn't do anything that would be an embarrassment to the city. Certainly, in, in the city manager profession, this is extremely rare and it's, it's a very difficult time for the city of Troy and we appreciate the opportunity to assist the council to work through and find their next manager, but certainly, we would do all our due diligence to make sure that we have a candidate that, that makes your, your city and theirs proud.
Because in Sterling Heights, if I'm not mistaken, had a similar situation or whatever, maybe half a decade ago, they had a fire there?
Yeah, they had an issue with, I think, it was, not the current, but you mean a prior one?
Right, right.
Yeah, I think their issue was with regard to the resume wasn't matching the actual experience in, in that case. And from, from my perspective, we do everything we can to better candidates, no process is going to be perfect, but we appreciate the opportunity to make sure that we get a, a good match for the candidate and for the city.
Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes, Mr. Bliss?
Just one follow-up question. So in the data you provided us, it looks like, and I'm just counting offhand, but there's, there's eight cities that are listed in here as you sourcing those city managers. Two of those are Grand Rapids and Hamtramck, which you've said you were not able to find a candidate. So does that mean of the eight that you've provided us, six of them you were able to find a candidate, or is there another one that you were not?
No, all of the rest have been successful yet, but we, we have to, we wanted to list them as clients because they were clients and, you know, we probably can, we should put a qualifier, like maybe we should put a qualifier after Hamtramck that says ongoing and Kent County with an asterisk, but I didn't want us to not tell you what happened in Grand Rapids, because you can Google it and it's out there, so.
So is your success rate, I mean, is that, is seventy-five percent an accurate success rate, or have you just been less successful in Michigan?
Well, we haven't been unsuccessful with Hamtramck and so I would, and I would, as I said earlier, our, our guarantee has been. our, our guarantee has been invoked less than two percent of the time out of the four hundred and fifty recruitments that we've done.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mrs. Scott?
If I could ask some questions, thank you for both for being here. James, you do teach at Oakland University, that's my alma mater too. I was curious to see what class, so I'm glad that Dave asked that question. What affiliations do you have, if, or any connections with MML?
We utilize MMLs advertising, they are advertising publications. We will be attending the MME conference, both of us, and both of us are presenting there next week. I have attended MML conferences. We have no formal affiliation, but we certainly participate in their conferences, have vendor tables and utilize their publications.
Okay, do you have any relatives in Madison Heights, because I know a lot of patrinos there?
Probably along the line, and some teachers I think who are patrinos in the Madison Heights area, but most of my relatives are Troyans from the Bronx.
Okay, I was just curious. Okay, now, have you read the city charter yet? The Madison Heights city charter?
I have not read the Madison Heights city charter.
Okay, and would that be part of your process?
Absolutely.
Analyzing, okay. And would you also work with a council, how would you work with a council that has different ideas about what they want in their city manager? How do you get around that?
Well, for me, there's no getting around it, there's a facilitation process and, and I think one of the early ways that we do it is with those stakeholder interviews that are one-on-one with myself. And I think as you have those conversations, I can start to pick up the, the places where there is agreement and the places where we're going to have to talk through different types of, of candidates that may fit some and not others. We can have those conversations then, and then the absolute stakeholder meetings, or we can see when the candidates come, which ones blend the most of those criteria that individual council members want. Recently, in the Grand Travers County Administrative Search, there was some differing opinions on the candidates that they wanted. But when we went through a formal process of kind of rating the candidates and looking at the criteria, the, the county commission, they really came together and coalesced around the same candidates relatively quickly. So while I understand that that can be a concern and we'll do all that we can to address on the front end, it's been, it's been my experience that facilitating these councils do come together relatively consistently.
How closely do you follow the city charter of a city when you're looking for a manager? Is that important to you?
That, yes, we would, we would absolutely follow whatever the charter provisions are. And that's hard to get back to the Hamtramck experience of, we, we will follow the charter and if the candidate, we would put forth a candidate that didn't meet charter requirements, if you want to change the charter through the process that the cities may change, that's fine, then we can come back and proceed, but we would follow the charter.
Okay, so if you felt that a lot of the, the opinions of the council were not following the city charter, is that how you would get around it then, by suggesting a revision of the charter?
Well, there's probably two pieces to this and I think I'm asking, answering the question without maybe having all the information. There's the, the letter of the law in the charter that will be followed, but the opinions of city council members and the types of candidates that they would like, that also should be considered, you know, weighed heavily. You can't not do what the charter says, but the opinions are something that we weigh heavily in terms of what can, what council members would like.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Geddings?
This is a little off-track a little bit, but I'd really like to know the answer. In your experiences, do you recommend to the council to ask the same questions of all the candidates? Or do you, do you suggest that they can spin off or spitball, if you will, and ask questions on their own? Is there a set rule?
Well, it's not really a rule, but what we, what we recommend and what we will do if we're hired is we will provide you with draft questions for your review. And we do recommend in the first round of interviews that you do ask the same questions of all the candidates because if you didn't ask one candidate about economic development, but they had a great background, you know, you just, you wanna be sure that you're getting a fair reading of each of the candidates. We have no problem with follow-up questions, you know, drilling down if the council members want to do that, but we do suggest in the first round that all of the candidates are asked the same questions, that you all have a chance to help design, should you like to do that. In the second round, there may be some, what the way it usually happens is there's probably some questions you're gonna ask each of the candidates, but then based on what happened in the first round, we work with you to develop specific questions for each of the candidates so you're drilling down a little further, maybe one candidate, you weren't really sure where they were on, on their budgeting and finance experience. So you might have a question specifically for that candidate on that issue. So that's what we would suggest, sort of a hybrid of what you're talking about.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for enduring this, it's been about forty minutes for this candidate, are there any other questions from members of council? Okay, any closing comments, any final thoughts?
First of all, thank you very much for your time this evening, you're very generous with the time you provided each of the candidates and I think it's important, this is one of, if not the most important decision a council can make in hiring the individual that will lead the staff and execute the policies of the city council. So taking your time to both select your firm as well as eventually select the candidate, I give you much credit for that. So thank you very much for your generous time, we wish you luck in your process, whoever you select. Madison Heights is a great city here in our county and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, good evening. There's a third candidate who's, thank you, good evening, there's a third candidate who's in city hall this evening. So, it looks like someone's gonna invite him in. All right, the, the next candidate tonight is a company called Strategic Government Resources, or SGR. And, good evening, sir, I'll tell you what, I told the other two applicants, is that, first of all, welcome to the city of Madison Heights and we will provide you just an open format to discuss anything you would like to discuss. There's no timeline to your presentation. When you feel you're concluded, I'll ask members of city council if they have any questions of you and then at the end of those, you'll have an opportunity, of course, to answer those questions and then at the end of the Q and A, I'll give you an opportunity for any closing remarks or final thoughts or if you wanted to clarify or extrapolate on one of your answers. But welcome, so if you'd please begin by identifying yourself and your company, welcome.
Super, thank you so much, Mayor and Council, appreciate the opportunity to be here with you. My name is Ron Hallifield, I'm the CEO slash owner of SGR. Give you a little quick history, I spent about twenty years as a city manager. Started SGR in nineteen ninety-nine, today we're the third largest local government executive search firm in the nation with about five hundred and fifty clients, not all searched, but in all of our business lines in forty-seven states. We, we, we only operate in local government. The reality is that this is, you know, I've been banging around local government for about forty years now and this is without a question the most challenging and difficult time to be in city management or serving on the city council. It, it is a really challenging time. And so a big part of a successful search is being able to assure candidates or prospects that we've asked the questions that they're going to want to ask. In other words, part of our job is to help find candidates, but the big part is figuring out who's going to be a good fit. To be honest with you, finding a stack of well-qualified folks is pretty easy. The hard part is figuring out who's really going to be a match. And, and for a manager to succeed, they really need to click in three different areas. The first one is that they obviously really need to click with the mayor and council. It, it's got to work well, it's gotta be the right chemistry with you. The second though is that they've really got to click with staff. If they are not able to really click with staff, they can be the boss, but they'll never become the leader. And then third is they've really got to click with the community, they've gotta fit with the community. So as we go through this kind of process, we're really looking on all three of those fronts. How do you find somebody that's going to be a great fit in all three of those, those dynamics? A effective search additionally, you really have, to be able to achieve that, you start with needing to identify candidate pools, both passive and active candidates. And there is no other firm that comes close to our network. We have a weekly newsletter called the Ten in, Ten in Ten on Servant Leadership. It is ten hot items each week dealing with leadership and also is the first place we announce all of the searches that we're doing. We have about sixty thousand local government officials nationwide that subscribe to that. Then in addition to that, we have approximately three thousand local officials who specifically have opted in to be notified of city manager searches that we're doing. In addition to that, with Twitter, we, we actually have a person that specializes in social media talent marketing on the team. With Twitter, we've only got about four thousand direct followers between me and SGR, but a typical Twitter blast, whatever the right terminology is, the typical tweet that we send out actually gets about forty-one thousand impressions because most of the major local government associations follow us and then they turn around and will tend to retweet the ones that are appropriate for that, that particular association. We also push it out on Facebook and Pinterest and Instagram and all of that sort of stuff, as well as LinkedIn. But honestly, the bulk of the reaction we get will tend to be from our direct outreach. On a typical, a typical search, and this has held for a number of years, approximately sixty-five percent of the semifinalist candidates will come from an SGR direct outreach. In addition, and that includes those social media things through our network. Approximately twenty percent will come from the National Association website or job board, in this case ICMA. And then the remaining roughly fifteen percent is about evenly split typically between the state association website and all other sources combined. So that gives you a little bit of a feel of our footprint and our reach in local government and city management nationwide. So outreach is that first leg, or actually, the fit is the first leg. And then the second one is the outreach and then the third key to a successful search is the vetting process. And again, there is, is no other firm that comes close to the degree or the depth of vetting that we do. And there's several things we do with that. Number one is from the moment we first take and begin posting or advertising the position, we actually take and will begin running Google Alerts on you and every Friday, all candidates will get a clipping service from us. What that does is two or three things. Number one is honestly, it makes them better candidates by the end of the road. Number two, it reduces attrition because if they know what they're getting into, they are far less likely to drop out late in the game. But most important of all, it's prompting interaction between the recruiter and the candidates. We have had folks say a variety of inappropriate things in response to that. It's sort of a stealth interview environment and it gives you a lot more insights than a formal structured interview does when they've got their guard down very blindly. In addition to that, what happens is once we've gone through and been on the street for about thirty days, I don't wanna go too deep on the process, you've got the proposal that lays that out, but once we get ready to review the proposals, we actually have two different people in the team, the recruiter who's a retired city manager and then a support person. We'll have two different people go through and do the technical reviews because we wanna see it through two different lenses because we all have our blind spots and so this helps to account for that. They will interact with each other, wait a minute, why did you say this instead of that, that sort of thing. Then, what we will do is we'll come meet with you and we will basically in a simple PowerPoint, we will triage them into three tiers. Tier three are folks that are just not contenders, tier two are folks that are really well-qualified but based on what we've heard out of you may not be a good fit and the tier A are the folks that really click on, on all fronts. Typically, when we come out of that meeting, you will have moved a couple of the tier Vs up to tier A and a couple of the tier As down to tier B based typically on personal knowledge that you may have of some of those candidates. Then what happens is when we come out of that meeting with semifinalists in place, we then will go into a far more involved level of vetting. The first thing that'll happen is that we will run a, what we call a stage one media search, that is LexisNexis. It's automated, but LexisNexis has very limited, it does not look at social media, it does not look at newspapers below a certain size and it only goes back so far. So we see it as a screening review. Then in addition to that, they will be asked to complete a very comprehensive questionnaire. We typically give them about ten days because we want really thoughtful responses to it and then we'll also do an online recorded interview with them. The best way to think about our process is actually putting together a patchwork quilt. You're, you don't know what the final product looks like until you've got all of the patches in place. You should never let any single step be a litmus test, good or bad, but as you go through it, you're gaining more and more insight, one piece at a time, until, until you really have a good handle on the whole. Then what happens is that we will prepare briefing books for you, you'll get those and we ask that you don't communicate with each other in advance about any of your rankings, but we ask you to do a very simple one, two, three ranking. One is, I'm really interested in this person, three is, I'm not interested any longer and two is, eh, I could go either way depending on the team. It will happen, it happens every single time, about a third of the candidates at that point when we review with you, you're no longer gonna be, everybody is no longer interested, about a third of the candidates, everybody's interested and about a third of the candidates is a mixed bag. So we'll spend time in a facilitated discussion about those that are the mixed bag and figuring out, okay, what, what did council member Scott see that the mayor didn't see in this person or vice versa or whatever. Then what will happen is we will come out of that meeting with a finalist list, typically four to six finalists. On the finalist, we ramp it up again in terms of the depth of the review that we're doing. With the finalist, we'll do a stage two media search. This is actually a manual search, we have two folks on the team that specialize in media searches. It is not unusual on a city manager to have two to two-hundred-and-fifty pages of media stuff. The goal is for you not to get any surprises anywhere. We will take and have prepared a finding summary for you. Unless you are way different than every city council I've ever worked with, some of you only want the bottom line and some of you wanna read every paragraph, every sentence, every period, every comma. So we, we designed the process to accommodate both of those. And what happens is in addition to running them through five different search engines, we also will take, we'll check every newspaper in every city they've been in, we'll check all of the social media sites, we'll check local blogs, et cetera. Now, we'll also caution you as we do it that, I know this will shock you, but just because it's on social media doesn't. it's on social media doesn't mean you can believe it. Our job, though, is to find things that we need to do the homework on to pare down and figure out again, so that there's no surprises. After the media search, what we will also do is a psychometric assessment. We've got two different assessments that we use. We can do one or both, depending on your preferences. One that we always, almost always do is DISC. DISC is the most longstanding, well-established personality assessment. It was designed in the '30s. We use a version called Everything Management, but DISC at its heart is really about personality. The second assessment we use is one called IOC, and it's Input Output Processing Template. Horrible name, but what it really does is it's designed to assess how you process information and make decisions. The thing that makes it so powerful is that you do it not just on the employee, but on the team, and it really helps you understand how they will fit in. For example, I am personally 1,880% more change-oriented than my team as a whole. When we're hiring people, that matters in terms of them understanding what they're getting into. It's not that that's good or bad, one way or the other, it's just reality. And so there's a lot of things you can do to understand team fit much more effectively with that than with a lot of other instruments that are available. Then in addition to that, what we will do, we'll do reference checks. We can care less what references they want us to talk to. We will actually provide them by position, the list of people we want them to provide us names and contact information on. On a city manager, it'll be all of their current or most recent city council, all of their direct reports, a couple of city managers from around the area. And then there can be some other optional ones, depending on what we have found out as we go through the process. We use a retired HR director to do the reference checks because in doing good reference checks, what somebody is not saying is usually more significant than what they are saying. And so we actually use a professional to do that. Then what we also do is a, the background check. Background for us is legal, civil, criminal. We actually use a private investigation firm for that. The reason we do that is there is no such thing as a national background search, a crime database, anything of that sort. It actually does not exist. So by using this network, this PI firm with a network, if you have somebody, and I'm making this up, I don't know that it's real, if you have a candidate from Dubuque, Iowa, and the courthouse that Dubuque, the county Dubuque is in, is not automated, they actually have a network to go out and physically review the files there because if you only do a automated search, you're going to miss anybody that's not automated. So that's the reason we do that that way. Then in addition to that, we do an advanced exercise. What we'll do about two weeks out in advance of the interviews, we will provide a very simple assignment, and that assignment is to provide a maximum five-page first-year game plan based on everything they know, plus we provide them all of your contact information and all of the key staff's contact information. And they've got free access, two weeks in and two weeks out, to take and develop that. What that advanced exercise does is two or three things. Number one, the normative environment for the city manager is they are, while they work for you, they are driving an awful lot of the conversation and the discussions. By having them leading this process of their research, it's far more normative on a daily basis as they're trying to figure out where the council is on any given policy initiative, et cetera. So you get a look at them that is far more reflection of real life than in a formal interview environment. Then in addition to that, you get a real clear sense of what they, how they operate with priorities. We've had some candidates, had one, no disrespect, Mayor, but only paid attention to the mayor, and that didn't go over real big with the rest of the council. We've had others that have had gender biases that have come through. We've had others that just didn't work very hard at it. I mean, there's a lot of things you get insights into how people operate with that. So we have found those to be incredibly powerful. What it also does is it gives each of you an opportunity to have some one-on-one interaction with each of those candidates in advance of coming together as a group and doing an interview. Then what we will do is we'll help you with, we've got sort of a master inventory of questions. We'll help you go through that. We'll help you think about what kind of community or employee engagement you want in the process. There is a wide array of ways to do that. We've done almost everything under the sun, and we will help you go through and go, okay, these are your advantages, here are the issues that you'll need to be able to do to manage that, et cetera. And then we'll be onsite during the interview, helping to manage it in essence be air traffic controllers. We believe philosophically through the whole process, our job is not to make any decisions for you, but our job is to equip you with really complete great information, insight, and understanding so that you can make great decisions. So we'll be there onsite during the interview process, and then we'll assist with the negotiations once you sort of have somebody. So with that, what I'd love to do is spend the rest of my time answering questions you may have and honing in on the things that you're most interested in.
Thank you, Ron. I appreciate your thoughtful presentation. My first question is, how many cities in Michigan have you worked for, has your firm worked for, especially for the city manager position?
Two cities and one special district, and, but Doug Thomas, and I apologize, Doug would have been here this evening. Doug will be leading it. Doug's father passed away on Friday, and so you got the second string so that Doug could deal with family issues and all of that. Doug was city manager in Alma, and he was assistant city manager, and I'm going brain dead, and I don't remember the city, but he was ACM in one city in Michigan, city manager in another city. He was here for about 12 years, if I remember right, and was actually on the board of the Michigan City Managers Association. So while the company has done only three, we actually have a long history here with Doug and knows an awful lot of Michigan managers.
Kind of a nuts and bolts question, but how many hours of work do you think it actually takes for your firm to begin to completion for the whole project?
Honestly, that depends more on the council than it does on anything else. We've had some low-maintenance councils and some high-maintenance councils. We did one search for a city manager where they asked us to come in and spend a week on the ground. We actually scheduled, any citizen in town could sign up on 30-minute windows for a solid week and tell the recruiters what you thought. So that obviously took a ton more hours. We did one just recently where there were actually 85 departmental and community meetings. Those are, both of those are way out of the ordinary, but that's my point, that it really does, it swings extreme. And we don't budget a certain amount of time. We're going to be with you in that process. The only additional cost you get, I think if I recall right, we've got four trips budgeted. You've got extra travel expense, but you don't have any extra professional expense. So if you decide to bring us back up to spend more time in whatever form or fashion, the fee does not go up, but the expenses are limited to four trips.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gettys?
Yes, sir. One quick question. Do you know any of us up here on council? Have you ever met us?
Not to my knowledge. And the only reason I put it that way is I speak at one state or national conference about every 10 days. So I meet a lot of people, but there's nobody sitting here that if I bumped into you in the grocery store, I wouldn't know who you were.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions from city council?
Your honor?
Mr. Bliss?
Yes, so your process is pretty, pretty strong. In, in the, I guess in the packet that we're given where it has the kind of example of your methodology and what a typical 15-week would be, I know on here it says with search committee key personnel. Is that just a blanket for council and whatever staff members we'd like to include?
Yeah, because we've also, we've had some councils that have actually said, we want a citizen search committee to do the front end, and then we'll get involved. We've had some councils at election time that the city council carried it to a certain point, then a new, so we started using generic language. It is all about doing what works for you.
Okay. And you had mentioned earlier to Mayor Hartwell's question that you had, is four city manager searches in Michigan?
Well, three searches. One of them was the Kalamazoo 911 dispatch center. So it was an executive director, but it was not a city manager.
Okay, so three, three searches, two of them titled city managers.
I am not, we did a search for Midland. I don't normally do these up here, and so I can't remember what the position was in Midland. In Muskegon Heights, it was a city manager.
Okay. I know none of your current searches listed on your website are in the state of Michigan. I think maybe one is in the Midwest right now. How do you, how do you do sourcing candidates so far away from your base, which seems like Texas, Georgia, south?
It, it's two or three things. Number one is, as I mentioned, I actually speak at one state or national conference about every 10 days. So we are very, very high-profile in that. The, I have not spoken at the Michigan conference. I've spoken at the Ohio conference, the Pennsylvania conference, et cetera, but not Michigan. In addition to that, and I should have run the numbers, and I apologize I didn't, and I shoot those to you after the fact, but the number of people, a really substantial number of your managers and assistant managers in Michigan all subscribe to both the Ten in Ten and our city management list. We have placed a number of managers in, out of Michigan in other states.
Now, you have, I mean, several manager positions with applications under review right now. I'm certain a couple of them are cities of our size. How many candidates would you expect that we would have applications for, based on your experience?
You're probably going to have, and let me qualify this, that this is kind of midpoint. If, if things are really as healthy here as they look like on the surface, this number will be higher. If there's things we haven't figured out yet, they'll be lower, to be real honest with you. But probably about 40 to 45 is what I would predict for this size city and where you're located and things of that sort.
Okay. And of that 40 to 45, how many of those would be passive candidates that you source based on what you hear and feedback from council?
That's a hard question to answer because everybody, we take a little different approach. So we're not going in and saying, okay, you're looking for an apple, and so we're only going to talk to apples. What we actually do is take the approach of throwing a very large net out and then having lots of interactions based on the fact that you are looking for an apple and telling, so for example, today, I actually flew into Cincinnati. I had lunch with somebody who is an aspiring city manager, not currently in a manager role in north of Cincinnati, and specifically, they were interested in a particular position. And I told him, I don't think your odds are going to be very good. You're not going to be a good match. So it's not quite as simple, a lot of what we're doing is providing that honest feedback to help people self-select out that are not a good match. But I would tell you that by the time we get down to your finalist group, you will feel very, very good that these folks are the, they're matching what you said you were looking for.
Okay, so you would say that your strength isn't really tied to the sourcing of candidates outside of an application process? It's more vetting those in an application process to make sure that the finals?
It's, that is a really appropriate question, and it sounds like I'm crawfishing, but what happens is I will get five to seven phone calls a week from city managers and assistant city managers that are not currently in a process, that are thinking about the next move. So it's, it's very much an organic process that it's always ongoing, and it's providing a lot of feedback. I'll get a lot of calls in this, or Doug will, a lot of calls that will say, well, they're really not looking for that, you know, that background. You're welcome to jump in. We're not telling you don't, but you need to know what they're really looking for. So our, our goal is actually to be honest enough with candidates that they don't jump in if they're not a good match because we don't think we're doing them a service or you a service to have somebody who's in there just for window dressing.
Not trying to crawfish, I like that. So when you do source passive candidates, what are the methods that you utilize to be able to target those passive candidates when you do?
Two or three things. Number one is, as soon as the search gets awarded, we actually will start announcing it as upcoming so that we're constantly trying to be in front of eyeballs that are out there. So that the folks, the roughly 4,000 we have have said, I want to be notified when you're doing stuff, they start knowing that this is coming down the pike. They can start thinking about it. That's number one. Number two is I and everybody else on the team, when we speak at conferences, et cetera, lots and lots of managers come up and want to have conversations. We regularly will schedule conversations. With this particular one, before the search is over, ICMA will happen in the middle of this process, depending on timing and such. That will, at ICMA, we will typically visit with probably 100 folks overtly about job opportunity, that they're, they're thinking, and most of the time, it's not just that they're coming looking for something, and they're asking about a particular job. It tends to be more, I'm thinking about, I'm ready to move, I'm thinking about, I'm ready for that next opportunity. In addition to that, we have actually just launched, and we're literally in the launch phase, of a new service called SG Recruiter that is designed, think conceptually Match.com, but for local government officials and employers. And it masks the individual's name and organization so that nobody can tell who they are and makes it safe for them to be out there in circulation as a passive candidate because roughly 75%, this is all industries, roughly 75% of all individuals who are fully employed consider themselves passive candidates. So all of our strategies have actually been designed to reach those passive candidates, all of the heavy blinds on social media, et cetera.
Well, that, that's why I'm paying a lot of attention to it, passive candidate, I mean, that's really the, other than the process and your ability to vet for us to make sure we don't have an issue where it embarrasses the council of the decision that we've made, which I appreciate, but the other key reason why you're here is to get to passive candidates who wouldn't normally fill out an application generally. So you've mentioned social media. I noticed, you talked about Twitter, having the amount of impressions that you do, you don't have a lot of engagement on Twitter. So I'm wondering, I mean, you do have a good amount of followers on LinkedIn. Are you stronger at sourcing through LinkedIn than Twitter? I know you've mentioned Twitter before.
With, I would say it is a little different with a local government environment. We tend, we are very, very sensitive. The question, I think you asked, councilman, somebody asked about, is there anybody you know? We are way sensitive to never looking like we're playing favorites or anything of that sort. Literally, we will stay in a different hotel than the candidates will stay in because we know so many of them. We don't want to do anything that implies we've got a relationship somewhere with one we don't have with another. we don't have with another. So we've tended not to have traditional, highly engaged, social media interactions. If you look at most of what we do, it's actually about job opportunities and pushing it out, and that's actually been consciousness on our part. Maybe the right or maybe the wrong, but it's been conscious.
Okay, so you don't, you don't do any direct contact through emails or in-mails or emails and, you know, DMs? You don't do any of that? It's mainly through the application process?
No, no, let me, let me make sure I'm clear. So every, every Tuesday morning, the 10-10 goes out to sixty thousand local government officials. We will have interactions with people as a result of that. Every search we're doing gets posted there. Every Friday, we do our job blast. Then we also do the Twitter blast, the LinkedIn, et cetera, on a regular basis, but it, but it's not, we don't do contests and those sorts of things.
So it's more batch and blast type of advertising and social posts as opposed to direct communication with targeted passive candidates through social media?
Yes, except, and I'm sorry that I don't fit in a, in a box. It's one of our challenges, to be honest with you. Except literally, we're having all constant phone calls with city managers. We, we have such a relationship with city managers, about two years before they retire, we'll tend to have them call. We'll have city managers call before they fire somebody and say, hey, I'm going to be meeting an IT director or whatever, heads up on that. We'll have city managers call and say, I've got one right now that I stopped on one of the trips I had coffee with two weeks ago, that he's got a five-four council right now, and he's not sure he's going to survive. And so he's starting to look at those other opportunities. So what happens is it's a much more personal relationship that occurs, and there's ongoing conversation. It's just not driven through the social media. On social media, we've chosen to focus that on putting out, pushing out, but, but the interactions are by far from being limited to social media.
Thank you. And to be fair, I've been harsh with everybody, so.
Oh, I don't feel like to be harsh.
My, my last question is, obviously, you know, you've, you've seen the agenda, you know, you know who, you know, who has submitted in here. Your, your bid is, is the highest that is being considered here tonight. Could you tell me a little bit about what sets, what sets you apart in that it's worth paying the additional premium?
Absolutely. And that's not unusual. Most of the competition tries to compete with us on price, because the amount of the rigorousness of the process we engage in, unlike most firms, we actually, you actually will have eight different people that have their fingerprints on this particular search. So we use a professional writer for the profile, we use a professional graphics designer, we have a recruitment coordinator assigned to it, and we use a specialist to do the media searches, et cetera. So it really is a far more involved process than, than the other firms. It's just, it's just the amount of labor that we put into it. And we have, we've made a very conscious business decision that we would rather only deliver Class A level service, and we know we're going to lose a certain amount of business based on price, and that's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Bliss. Other questions for members of city council?
Mr. Harvick?
Just, just a quick question. The, this council and its predecessors doesn't have a great deal of experience in hiring city managers. We've done a couple, but in terms of the scale, you know, we're envisioning a, a large search. I guess my question is, if six months after the process, you know, we're all sitting around looking at the manager, and we each say to each other, what were we thinking? What, what, what probably went wrong on your experience? What's the, the one thing a council needs to, or a couple of things does a council need to look out for?
I'm going to answer that generically. I have no reason to believe any of this applies to this group based on.
Nor was, nor was there a hidden message. We just don't have, I mean, this is not a process we've gone through in a generation.
The, the searches that have been a failure have largely been because of councils that wouldn't listen. I had one, we did, that we literally, the recruiter sat in executive session, told the council that on the reference checks, we had multiple people say that the candidate they were falling in love with had lied to them repeatedly, and they still hired him, and he lasted a year. On another one that did not work out, it was a young up-and-comer. It was a very, 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 very tough political environment, so much so, in executive session. I told the council, this place is a political snake pit. Those are the words I used. And I said, you, this is not a city for a first-time city manager. I talked till I was blue in the face to get them to not hire him. I talked till I was blue in the face to tell him he wouldn't survive here. And he lasted less than eighteen months. So the, the failures are typically that. If we do a good job of understanding what you're looking for, and then do a good job of giving you really deep understanding, honest understanding and insights into the candidate pool, it just, it's very rare. I, I can't think of any situations where six months later, it's gone south. Now, different dynamic, most of the time, when we have one that doesn't survive, it's because there has been an election change, and the council he was working for loved him or her, and the new council wanted to change the direction. That's King's X to me, you know, there's nothing we can do to predict that. It's the reason we end up with really, really long-term relationships with, with cities.
Yeah, it's just, you know, like I said, we, the last time there was a large search was, were you even here then, Marjorie, when John was hired?
No, that was the year before I came on.
Then it's a wrap. It's a full generation since we've had this scale of process before.
It, it is not unusual for that to be the case, and I love the fact that you're sensitive to that. That, that just implies wisdom, to be honest with you.
You're hired.
Our process is designed to presume that a council doesn't do this very often. I mean, the reality is, the fact that you don't do it very often is the best thing you've got going for you. The first question candidates ask is how stable, what happened to the last guy? How stable is this? We're in an environment, I open, I'm telling you, this, this is the toughest time to be on the council or in city management in the last forty years. And so the first question folks want to know, now, there are some who consider themselves line tamers and are drawn to a broken environment. That comes back to the fit issue, is us really understanding you and understanding the candidates.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Other questions?
Mr. Hollyfield, I noticed that you had twenty-four people that serve as executive recruitment teams. So I'm probably asking you to speak for all of them, but have any of them or you ever done any presentations at the National League of Cities? Or do you, are you affiliated with them at all?
We are not affiliated with them at all. We've never, to my knowledge, none of them have ever done a presentation. Multiple ones, although, will have been managers in cities that were members of NLC. But, but generally speaking, NLC tends not to be a primary place of engagement for city managers.
Right.
Nationally, it tends to be ICMA.
Yeah.
Now, we have had some conversations with NLC over on the training side of things. Honestly, we've initiated some conversations about elected official training, and that hadn't gone very far. We, we haven't given up on it, but, but, so there's not a relationship, there's been a conversation.
Okay, what about the ICMA? Have you given presentations or any training to those individuals?
Absolutely. I, in fact, I'm actually just got appointed, I've been a member of ICMA since about nineteen eighty. All of our recruiters that are former city managers are either current or former members of ICMA.
Okay.
I just got appointed to one of their committees. I've served on committees for, gosh, the last decade. When the assistance, it was the hundredth anniversary of ICMA a couple of years ago, and the assistance committee actually went out and polled assistants nationwide about a luncheon speaker. And based on that polling, I was invited to come in and be their, their luncheon speaker to the assistance luncheon at ICMA at the hundredth anniversary. So we've been very, very involved with ICMA. We, we, yeah, we're there every year, we know everybody, we participate in committees, all of that sort of stuff.
Okay, I'm impressed with those credentials, by the way. I think that anybody who works with them ought to know what they're doing. I would like to also know, you said, please tell me how you go about determining what the needs of the council are before you actually recommend who they should hire?
What will happen is Doug will actually come in and do one-on-one interviews with each one of you.
Okay.
As well as one-on-ones with key staff. And one of the things, very honestly, we'll be looking for is consistency. You know, are we hearing different versions of reality, which gives, sends us down one path if everybody is pretty much on the same path? Doesn't they agree? But if their perception of reality is consistent, that's one pathway versus if everybody's perception of reality is different. I have one city council I did a search for that I literally called a timeout in the middle of the search, and I said, we've got to go sit down and do a retreat, because I literally had a five-member council and three of the members, when we started trying to narrow the field, three of the members, if the mayor wanted person A, they would support person B. If the mayor said, okay, I can live with person B, they literally switched to support person. Well, that's a very different kind of dynamic. I always say to councils that in a weird way, we will become one of your closest, most intimate friends for about a hundred and twenty days. And the reason I say that is every one of you ran for council with desires to accomplish things. There's things that motivated you, that made you want to run, and some of it, you feel good about what you've accomplished, and some of it, you feel frustrated with. And when you have a new manager, that manager tends to be the embodiment of how you accomplish the things that motivated you to get involved in the first place. So what happens is, and I know it sounds a little weird, but you start sharing with us, you will, I promise you, start sharing with us your, your desires, you know, your deepest hopes for the future of the city, and those are the things that help us take and begin to look at folks and figure out. Now, we do the same thing with key staff. We're going to ask almost the exact same questions, and we're going to want to know, is there a different view of reality between staff and the council? The, I don't want to call them by name up here in a public setting, but I'll be glad to give them to you privately and let you call them. I did a city manager for a search, a city manager search for a group last year, and I just told them, I said, guys, you're broken. You've, you've got to change how you're doing. If you want somebody to succeed here, you've got to change how you're doing business. And it prompted some really great, healthy, productive conversations, and they would, I, I promise you, they would tell you today, man, greatest thing we ever did was had SGR come do the search, because we were straight with them. You know, they don't have to agree with it, but we're going to be very honest about it. We're not going to pull any punches. And that, all I really was doing was telling them what they and the staff had already told me. We just simply kind of began to package it and say, here is why you're getting the frustration that you're getting because of the way you're operating.
All right. If you encountered something like that, other than what you just said, how would you handle something like that, where you see differences as what people want?
Well, let's, let's distinguish, there is, there are so many variations. It's hard to just give a nice, neat little answer. So we're working with one city right now. We just did a retreat for a city, that in that particular city, you have a council member who is just simply a bully. It's the only word for it. How you deal with that is different than another city council we worked with, that you have one council member that just won't engage. They, they, they ran on an anti-city platform, and they got on, on the council, and now they don't know what to do. They, and, and they literally won't participate in retreats. They feel like that's, that's sacrificing their integrity to actually plan for the, I mean, it's kind of a crazy deal. Well, that's different. It's not, the issues are not when you disagree about what you want to accomplish, it's about when you disagree with the rules of the game for how you operate as a team. As long as you, as long as you really are placing the value of functioning as a well-functioning team, the disagreement over the issues are small potato stuff. Those are, those are easy to work through.
All right. Now, I like the fact that, that you said that you give this evaluation to the council at first, and they work without talking to each other. How can you guarantee that, that they're doing that?
You can't.
I agree. That's, that's a good answer.
And the only thing I would tell you is that ironically, we have had almost zero cases where they haven't lived up to it.
Okay.
And, and one of them was the council where I called a timeout, that they were, they were so focused on fighting that they couldn't function. What happens with most councils is, this, this is the single most important decision you will make as a sitting city council. Most profoundly impacting decision you'll make. Most city councils understand and recognize that and truly want to make a great decision and so honor the, the process. It's very, very rare.
Before you would, for instance, if we decide to hire you, before you would begin your processing, how important would the city charter be to your firm and the person that you recommend to us?
We would absolutely look at that, and I'll tell you that there's a lot of variation, so it's not like there's a yes or a no, you know, good or bad. It's, it's, it's just about understanding. But absolutely, we would look at that. We, we mainly would want to know, are there any really weird aberrations? We worked with one city, the way open meetings law worked there is you could not post an open meeting, but the mayor could decide that you went into closed session. I mean, you could not post a closed meeting, but the mayor could decide. Well, that was just kind of wacky, to be honest with you. I thought we needed to let candidates know, here's the, it comes back to the fit issue. Some folks can operate in that, some can't. Florida has the most intense open meetings, open records laws anywhere. It is very common to see in Florida, full write-up transcript of reference checks show up in the newspaper. So you modify the process accordingly. You know, you have to, so it's just the charter, we're going to want to look at it, we're going to want to know, are there any, any things that are going to be out, considered unusual candidates, because it's very important. It goes back to what I said earlier. Part of our job is to ask the questions the candidates would want to ask, and so absolutely.
Yeah, I was just wondering if you found that a majority of the council didn't want to follow the charter. How would you handle something like that? What would be most important to you? To appease the council or to, to bind by the charter?
If you talk to anybody who has worked with us, this probably isn't a good sales pitch approach, but.
That's all right.
We don't do appeasement.
I understand.
We, we, we believe we have a duty to you, but we're going to, part of that duty, and if, you know, if a council doesn't want somebody that's going to just tell you what they really think, shoot straight with you, we're. they really think, shoot straight with you, we're, we're not going to be your right choice. In one particular situation, we actually ended up facilitating a council retreat to overhaul. Usually, usually the charter is not the big issue, it's governance policies that are, are the absence thereof that are being enforced. And we, 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 we believe that our duty is to be really honest with you and to bring our experience to bear. And it's your duty to make the decision.
Right.
But it's our duty to be honest with you.
But the fact that you suggested a retreat means to me that you recognize when councils are having difficulties, and that that is necessary before you hire a city manager or even think about it.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you very much. You've been very helpful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council members? All right, Ron, any closing comments, any ideas, anything? You have the final word.
Absolutely. I appreciate that, Mayor. I, I simply want to say, if you should hire us, as we hope you do, but if you should hire us, you certainly will get our hands, our skills, our abilities and all of that. But the promise I would make you is that you will have us heart and soul as well. You'll have us emotionally invested in the, not just the process, but the success of the person. We get emotionally invested in every city we work with. It honestly goes back, Councilman, to some of those issues of passive candidates. We tend to develop really long-term relationships with communities and organizations and with the elected officials and things, because it matters to us a lot that you end up with a home run. And just, you know, that, that's the, the only closing shot is that if you hire us, you get our skills, but you're also going to have our heart and soul emotionally invested in Madison Heights.
Thank you, Ron. I appreciate the time. You're free to leave.
Thank y'all very much. Y'all have a wonderful rest of your year.
Okay.
Thank you.
So just to put a bow on it, we just concluded the consideration of the credentials of those three firms who may provide city manager search firm services to the city. We spoke to Amy Sell, the owner of Amy Sell Talon. We spoke to Mr. Vetrano and Heidi Voorhees, the president of GovHR USA. And we just spoke to Ron Holyfield, the CEO of Strategic Government Resources. So that's it. Does council have any thoughts or remarks? All right, let's move on with the agenda. There are no reports this evening or no items for a future public hearing, so we can, we can go to our bid awards and purchases. F1 is from the acting city manager, and it's regarding the parcel redevelopment, RFJ Investments and HP Snap Investment. Ms. Marsh?
Yes, as part of the adopted fiscal year 2019 goal plan, city council adopted a goal to redevelop tax foreclosed properties. On June the 11th, city council approved the purchase of 14 foreclosed properties from the Oakland County Treasurer. Staff has issued RFQ for development companies to immediately purchase those properties from the city at the cost plus applicable administrative fees. The city cannot retain any money from selling the properties for more than the purchase price. Benefits of this program include immediate cleanup of exterior property, as well as the ongoing maintenance, guaranteed code compliant renovations for foreclosed properties in a prompt fashion, sale of residential properties to owner occupants, and immediate tax-based benefits from renovated structures. On May 18th, the RFQ closed with five companies submitting proposals for review. After meeting with the companies and checking references, staff recommends awarding these parcels for redevelopment to two of those companies, FPJ Investments and HP Snap Investments, to split the 14 parcels. Each company would receive seven properties with an alternating pick system. Staff and I recommend that council approve the purchase agreements with FPJ Investments and HP Snap Investment to purchase and redevelop the available properties pending legal council reviews of the agreement.
Thank you. What's the, what's the city council?
Your honor?
Mr. Bliss?
I move that we approve the purchase agreements for RFJ Investments and HP Snap Investment, which will award the parcels of redevelopment, splitting the 14 parcels, seven to each in an alternating system, and also have that pending legal review of the purchase agreements themselves.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Support?
Thank you. Motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Councilman Corbett, to approve the purchase agreements with RFJ Investments and HP Snap Investment to purchase and redevelop the 14 available properties, seven to each company, to be selected in an alternating system, and this would be pending legal council review. Is there any discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Is it okay if we have the two companies come up and introduce themselves?
Of, of course. Good evening. If you could go to the microphone and identify yourself and your affiliation. Welcome.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Jake from HP Snap Investments.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Jim Budziak from FPJ Investments.
Thank you. Welcome. Mr. Soltes, do you have any specific questions?
Yeah, with, how long have each of you been doing this type of service, business?
I've been doing bank-owned renovations and tax foreclosures for the past 15 years or so, and really, the last six years, I've been heavily focused on tax sale properties with communities. I started five years ago with two communities, and the program has just continued to grow. And the most, I've been doing Oak Park for the, the last five years, which is the community that's closest to yours. So I started there. They gave me a chance four years ago, and they've continued to renew the contract with me every year.
So HP Snap was founded in 2005. We've been handling municipalities' tax foreclosure since 2008. Our closest city to you guys would be the city of Warren, but we are currently in seven other municipalities other than Warren, and of course, Madison Heights.
You said seven others?
Correct, in Wayne County.
What, what other cities?
City.
Can you tell me the other cities?
Uh, sure. River Rouge, Lincoln Park, Redford. Yeah, you'll give me, it's been a long
That's all right.
City of Wayne.
It is 10-10.
Yeah, Inchester as well.
What kind of difficulties do you find, experience doing this type of special foreclosure?
So the difficulty that matters most is the eviction process. Obviously, there's a lot of negativity that can come out of this, this program. So our goal is to steer away from that eviction entirely. We try and relocate the occupants to one of our other houses outside of the tax foreclosure program. There's a few other options we explore in detail with them, understand their situation completely. Ultimately, what we do is we create a paper trail for the city council and the city entirely, just in case any type of blowback comes from the program. The city has all of this documentation. Why didn't you take this option with the company? They provided you with every outlet that they could. So it, it dismisses any type of negative from the program.
So speaking of blowback, you, I, I think I read somewhere, if I'm not mistaken, early 2016, that there was a lawsuit involved with the 800s plaintiffs?
Yeah, so that was before my time, so I think Jim
I'm actually into that. So in 2016, there was an attorney that filed a lawsuit against, I think, four municipalities, Wayne County Land Bank. And he, and he made the claims that there was collusion going on, and that the programs were illegal, and yada, yada, yada. And the, the long story short is, he lost at, at every single level, including, he actually carried it all the way down to the, to the Sixth Circuit in Cincinnati, and it was dismissed there. It cost me a lot of money, but the ironic thing is, now we have some pretty good case law in books, that what the cities are doing is completely legal. I mean, MCL 21178 is, is pretty specific. It gives the city the right of first refusal for a public purpose. And there's actually two cases. One is Bay City versus Bay City Treasurer, where Bay City requested three, three or four properties. The treasurer said, "No, we're not going to give you these properties. It doesn't meet a public purpose." It was litigated once again, all the way through the Court of Appeals at the state of Michigan level, and they basically ruled that the legislature never gave the authority to the county treasurer to police the right of first refusal activity. When a city asks to exercise their right of first refusal, the treasurer is to simply convey the properties to the city. And it's been upheld with two really solid cases.
So that, that was, I was going to ask that, what, what assurances can you give us? But you're saying that the, this case law and
There's, there's two really good cases, as well as a bunch of ancillary cases, but there's two really good cases that are right on point.
So can I ask you, how do you view this process, like, as a, as a, when people go to auction, and houses go up? I know the literal sense of the word, but how, how do you, how do you view that in terms of what, what this process is about?
Okay, so this process came out of the auction, really. What I did was, six years ago, I went to the city, a couple of cities, and what was happening was, the bulk of the properties that were going to auction were getting purchased and converted to rental properties, because that's ultimately what happens at the auction. The, I'm, long story short, the, the people who buy and hold and rent properties have a different business model than the people who buy, renovate and sell. And, and they can really outbid the guys who are going to buy, renovate and sell every single time. So we started seeing a trend in all these communities with large numbers of tax sale properties. They were getting bought, converted to rental properties. So we went to the communities and said, "Why don't you take control of the tax sale properties in your community, partner with us, we'll guarantee a certain level of rehab, we'll guarantee that our contractors are licensed, licensed and insured, we'll pull permits, there'll be certificate of occupancies." And then also very important is that the properties will get listed on the MLS and sold at market value. So we've seen momentum in the communities that we've been in for four or five years, where the appraisers now go to our properties for the comps in that city, because our properties sell typically are the highest, the sales in the city, because they have new kitchens, granite countertops, stone backs flashes, the hardwood floors, you know, bathrooms redone, basement redone, if it needs a roof, it gets a roof, driveway. And so, it's really not only, it's not only increased the value of the properties we're renovating, it, it helps to increase the value of all the neighboring properties by providing those good comps.
If I may, gentlemen here, you mentioned that you help, you provide some type of assistance before you evict them. I mean, do you do that every time, or how successful is that?
It's pretty successful. I think over the course of our business, doing this tax foreclosure process, we've only had to force the legal eviction on two occasions that I remember. So I'd say, given that statistic, we're pretty successful with that. The other important thing is, we don't cast any rentals out of this program. They're all 100% guaranteed homeowners, and they are proven to increase the values in the communities. In Redford, we sold a two-bedroom house for $130,000 about three weeks ago. It's unheard of. It set a new record.
Lastly, I, I know you're, everybody that buys a house, I mean, I'm concerned about the lead, lead pipes that are in there. I know the city's handling up to a certain point, but do you guys take a look at that?
Yeah, so I think it was actually in the RFP from Madison Heights. So our initial assessment of the property involves an assessment for lead and asbestos testing. If lead or asbestos is detected, then we send out the licensed individuals to remediate the problem.
Is that, is that when the city water, or inside the house, the pipes that lead up to the faucet?
We do a full assessment
Full assessment?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any other comments from city council? All right, we can vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
All right, the motion carries. The next bid award or purchase is a request from the DPS director regarding the swing set replacement in multiple city parks. Mrs. Marsh?
The fiscal year 2018 budget and capital improvement plan include a line item for the replacement of the aged standalone swing sets in multiple city parks, many of which are over 30 years old. On March 14th of 2018, staff issued an RFP and two proposals were received by the bid deadline. Due to the unexpected community development block grant funding for the Ambassador Park parking lot improvements, that money was carried forward to help increase the amount for the swing set upgrades. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, staff and I recommend that the proposal to furnish and install swing sets in the city parks be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder, Play and Environment's Design of Holland, Michigan, at a unit cost identified plus contingency in an amount not to exceed the $54,000. Funding has been carried forward and is available in the 2019 budget.
Thank you. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corbett.
Sir, I move that the, oops, let me go back a step here, that the council approve the awarding of the bid for replacement swing sets in several parks to Play Environmental Designs of Holland at unit costs identified plus contingency in an amount not to exceed $54,000. The funding is being carried forward and is included in the 2018, 2019 budget.
Thank you. Is there
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Gettings?
Second.
Thank you. A motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilman Gettings, to approve the recommended proposal to award the bid to Play Environment's Design of Holland, Michigan, for the replacement and furnishing and installation of swing sets in multiple city parks at the unit costs identified plus contingency in an amount not to exceed $54,000. Is there any discussion from city council? All right, let's vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. The next bid award or purchase is item F3 in the agenda, also from the DPS director, it's regarding the commercial water meter replacement program, meter and parts purchase. Mrs. Marsh?
The adopted fiscal year 2019 budget includes $1.2 million in capital funding for the commercial water meter replacement program. The city last replaced commercial water meters between 1993 and 97, and they are an average of 23 years old. Our water meters have exceeded their 20-year functional lifespan, as recommended by the American Waterworks Association. Considering the city's extensive investment in Neptune automated meter reading system and other manufacturer products not being compatible with our system, staff and I consider the meter replacement portion of this project sole source, therefore, research was limited to Neptune meters. As with the citywide residential water meter replacement program, there is a significant cost savings if the city purchases the meters and other equipment directly from Neptune through the Oakland County Cooperative Purchasing Contract. Our request for a proposal to solicit the installation of the city's commercial water meters was issued on June the 22nd, with a closed date of July 12th. Staff and I expect to approach council regarding this RFP at the regular council meeting of July 23rd. Based on this information, staff and I request that council approve the purchase of the Neptune T10 and compound water meter register heads and R900 transmitters from Ferguson Enterprises for the unit costs contained in the attached price list for a total estimated amount of $627,424 through the Oakland County Cooperative Purchasing Contract. Funds are budgeted and available.
Thank you. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
I move that council approve the purchase of Neptune T10 and compound water meters, register heads and R900 transmitters from Ferguson Enterprises for the unit costs contained in the price list for a total estimated amount of $627,424 through the Oakland County Cooperative Purchasing Contract number 004822.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Grafstein?
Support?
Thank you. Motion was made by Councilmember Scott, seconded by Councilor Grafstein, to approve the purchase of water meters, register heads and transmitters from Ferguson Enterprises for the unit costs contained in the price list for a total estimated amount of $627,424 through the Oakland County Cooperative Purchasing Contract 4822. Is there any discussion? Let's vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. That brings us to item F4, which was added to the agenda earlier tonight regarding the sale of real property. Is there a motion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Could I ask either the attorney or the manager for a, is it simply a matter of sale of property, but don't, I'm asking for a little help with motion, that council?
Oh, I could state the motion.
There you go.
If a member of council would like to make this motion, it would be to approve the sale of 14 foreclosed properties purchased from Oakland County pursuant to section, MCL Section 211.78M Subsection 1 of Public Act 123 of 1999, for the purchase price plus administrative fees, and to authorize the acting city manager to sign all necessary documents on behalf of the city.
I couldn't have said it better, sir, and I would incorporate that in my motion.
That's your motion, sir?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Grafstein?
I support Mr. Corbett's motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Mr. Sherman, please.
One point of interest
Uh, one point of interest, uh, point of information to council, because it involves a sale of property, five votes, a supermajority are required to, to pass the motion.
The point is well taken. Any other discussion? Motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilor Grafstein, to approve the sale of fourteen foreclosed properties purchased from Oakland County pursuant to MCL Section 211.78M, subparagraph one, for the purchase price plus administrative fees, and to authorize the acting city manager to sign all necessary documents on behalf of the city. And I shall note the point of order by the city attorney, that this would require an affirmative vote of five members of City Council. Any final discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Motion carries six to one. There are no other bid awards or purchases this evening, nor other ordinances or unfinished business. Can I please have a motion regarding the minutes of the special meeting of six twenty-five?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Sir, I move that the council approve the minutes of the special council meeting of June twenty-five, twenty eighteen.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Bliss. Any...
I support. He was assuming that, but yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Bliss, thank you for supporting the motion. Motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, to approve the minutes of the special City Council meeting of June twenty-five, two thousand and eighteen, as printed. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. I'm sorry, Mr. Gettings, yes?
I, I just was too late.
No, that's fine. Um, opposed, say no. Motion carries seven to zero. Can I have a, another motion for the regular council minutes?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Gettings?
So moved.
To adopt them as printed?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Corbett. Motion was made by Councilman Gettings, supported by Councilman Corbett, to adopt as printed the regular City Council minutes of six twenty-five eighteen. Any discussion?
Uh, Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I believe that there are, there are two, uh, two errors, uh, that, that should be noted in, in here, um, and perhaps our acting clerk would be able to, uh, you know, look into this, but I believe that when, uh, when I motion, made a motion to table, uh, the resolution that would have changed the Arts Board, uh, that Councilman Gettings voted against that, uh, and so this reads a, uh, all, all yeas with zero nays, and so I believe that, uh, that should be read, that should read, uh, all yeas except for, uh, Councilman Gettings, uh, and in the opposed column.
Can you give me the specific paragraph you're looking at?
Uh, sure.
Something, there's a reference number?
It's CM eighteen two oh five. Uh, right now, it, it looks unanimously four. I believe that Councilman Gettings voted against that.
I will look into that.
Okay, so, um, let's, uh, I'll ask the maker of the motion, Mr. Gettings, would you amend your motion to adopt the minutes as printed pending the review of the acting clerk?
Yes, sir.
On that one point of order?
Support agrees, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Corbett.
Your, Your Honor?
Yeah.
Uh, one, one more piece, uh, the, uh, discussion, uh, as related to the, the senior center name change, uh, and, uh, my, uh, emphasis on the potential report was not included in the, uh, in the minutes as printed, so.
Your emphasis on...
What, what word? The, the discussion, the discussion following, um, it, the discussion as related to the senior center name change is not represented in, uh, the minutes as printed. Uh, there is discussion noted, uh, for the salad waste contract extension, uh, which is following that, but there is not any discussion noted about the senior center name change. And so I would just ask that that be, uh, added in as well.
Can you tell me what, uh, motion that was also?
Uh, sure. It's CM eighteen two oh six.
Okay. Mr. Bliss, I'm sure no offense was meant, best practices dictate that minutes record what happened, not was, what was discussed, but in this case, uh, would the maker of the motion agree to adopt the minutes as printed, subject to the acting clerk's review of his two points? Mr. Gettings?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Fine, I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Corbett. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Are there any nominations to boards and commissions from members of City Council tonight?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Um, somebody's gonna have to help me with the last name, maybe, do you know Margaret Marin tet, I'm trying?
She's tagging. I'm sorry.
Is she, uh, applied, she was in the informational file for the zoning board of appeals, Margaret Marin Teddy?
Marinette.
Marinette, okay, all right. I would move to appoint Margaret Marin tet to a, uh, spot on the zoning board of appeals, a vacant term expiring two-one-twenty.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Grafstein?
Support.
Thank you. Uh, nomination was made by Councilman Corbett, uh, seconded by Councilor Grafstein, to appoint, uh, Margaret Marin tet to the vacant seat on the zoning board of appeals for a term to expire February first, twenty twenty. Is there any discussion? That's an alternate position.
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Any other council nominations this evening? All right, I don't believe there are any others. All right, we do not have an executive sc- session scheduled tonight, so before we adjourn, I'd invite any closing comments from members of City Council and staff. So let's begin with Mr. Corbett.
Uh, just if, uh, you may recall back a few hours ago, we had the winners of the police commendations, and I just wanted to express my thanks and congratulations to the professionals who were, uh, who were recognized a little earlier. When I woke up at five-thirty this morning, I had a feeling it was gonna be a long day, sir, and it turned out to be, so, uh, that's it, I have nothing to add.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bliss?
Yes, Your Honor, I, I am, I'm regretting, uh, that I did not, uh, bring Red Bull to the meeting tonight. Uh, it was a long one, but it was a really good one, and so, uh, as was noted by, uh, a couple of the firms that, that had spoke here tonight, uh, this is probably the single most important thing that we as a council can and will do. Uh, in our city manager form of government, the manager handles, uh, much of the day-to-day is the, the general face of the city, uh, for most of the, the day-to-day operations. They're in charge of, uh, managing our, our entire city staff and making sure that the commitment that each of us on council, uh, individually and collectively, the commitment that we make to the city is, is upheld through that day-to-day. And so, uh, it was a really, really great discussion. I enjoyed hearing what each of these firms, uh, had to say, and I, I truly appreciate the openness of the process, uh, that, you know, those of you still in, uh, in the chairs here tonight, which, by the way, give yourselves a round of applause, 'cause, uh, you're, you're still here tonight, and you watched the, the whole thing, I'm sure there's a few folks, uh, watching at home right now, too, and, and, and you're able to see everything that these firms are, are saying, you're, you're a part of this process. We will continue to, uh, have this in, in, in open, open meetings, uh, so that way you're able to see what goes into this search, so when we make a decision, uh, everyone in the public will know where it came from and how it came from. And so that starts with the search firm, so I appreciate that everybody was so patient with us, uh, as we vetted them out tonight. Um, secondly, uh, you may have noticed I have, uh, t-shirts up here, I'm, I'm, I'm wearing one tonight. Uh, these are the Arts Board, uh, t-shirts. They're actually made, uh, from a manhole cover in the front yard of, of one of our members, uh, who's a, a former costume designer by trade, and, and these, these, these shirts are, are really cool, they come in multiple colors, you see a few of them up here right now, uh, but what's amazing about these shirts is that every shirt that you purchase, the proceeds of it goes to adding more arts and cultural programming into our community. And so if you're looking for a really cool shirt, something that represents the city of Madison Heights, uh, pick one up. Also, if you're looking to support the arts in the city, uh, you're doing both at the same time when you purchase these shirts, they're twenty dollars. Uh, I can take, uh, cash tonight, we do have, uh, many sizes and many colors, uh, or if you want to come into City Hall during standard hours, not only do we take cash, but we take, uh, checks as well as all major, uh, credit cards as well. So, uh, please come in, please support the arts, uh, wear the t-shirt, and then definitely let everybody know where, where you got it at, uh, they're a limited edition, uh, right now, uh, so these colors won't last long, uh, and stay tuned for, for more from the Arts and Culture Board. And, and finally, my, my last thing tonight, uh, for the next meeting, if we could make sure that, uh, Councilman Soltis's microphone is checked, there, there was a lot of, uh, pitch issues, I, I kept waiting for you to ask if, uh, uh, what somebody's favorite scary movie was, it was that. And that, that distorted, so, uh, but I appreciate it, and that's probably because it's been three hours, and that's all I'm hearing right now.
Thank you, Mr. Get... Oh, thank you. Mr. Gettings?
Just two things, Mr. Mayor. Uh, June was Recreation Month, so we have a couple months left of summer, if everybody could recreate, not just work super hard every day, but make sure you plan some time for yourselves. I see the two ladies at the restaurant, and they're killing themselves each day working so hard. You have to recreate, you guys, you really do. The second thing is, I just want to thank the city for having a police chief, a DPS supervisor, and an acting city manager slash treasurer doing such a great job, because without these people, we wouldn't be here. You guys are the backbone and the heart of the city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. City Attorney, Mr. Sherman?
I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor, this evening, thank you.
Acting City Manager, Mrs. Marsh?
I don't have anything either.
Thank you. Acting City Clerk, Ms. Sanchez?
Um, just that, uh, absent anyone who wishes an absentee ballot for the August election can pick them on up at the city clerk's office.
Uh, oh, Ms. Sanchez, it, is there a deadline of when someone has to first apply for it? And then, isn't it kind of two steps, and they actually have to first apply to get on the rolls, and then, can you explain that?
Right, they have to fill out an application for an absentee ballot. Once we have the absentee application, we will then issue mail the absentee ballot. So they do have to apply first.
Okay.
And they can do that at the city clerk's office.
Okay, until when? Is that like up to the Saturday before the election?
That's the last, the ballots, the last time ballots are mailed is the Saturday prior to the election. The last time you can pick up the ballot in person is Monday, four PM, the day before the election.
Hmm, okay.
Which I believe is August sixth.
Okay, thank you.
And today was the last day to register to vote for the August election.
Thank you. Ms. Grafstein?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Scott?
Yes, I would like to announce, there are two events coming up at the Madison Heights Active Adults Center. One is the Ice Cream Social, which is Monday, July twenty-third, between one and two-thirty PM. It's only two dollars a person, and they're celebrating the fact that July is National Ice Cream Month. Um, the last day to sign up for this is July eighteenth, so, um, please sign up for this and attend it on Monday, July twenty-third. Um, also, they will be having a Christmas in July sale on Thursday, July twenty-sixth, from nine to twelve, and it's a little ironic, the fact that you've heard of Christmas in July, and this is really Christmas in July. You can get your shopping done, and the, um, senior has, will be providing you, uh, lots of items and gifts, and they are also accepting donations, if you would like to make a donation, for that to be offered for sale for somebody. What you can't use, somebody else might love to have that, and so I applaud both of those events. Um, I would also like to make mention of a very special couple here in Madison Heights, um, Joy and Leroy Davids. Um, Joy was Joy Fair, and she graduated from Madison High School in nineteen forty-nine, and she married Lee very early, and they have a beautiful family, um, and grandchildren as well. Uh, very dedicated to the city, in fact, I want to thank her personally for helping Rosalynn Yurman and I write that book, because she did so much research behind the scenes for us, plus introduced us to several of the pioneers that we had never met before in Madison Heights. So she had a lot of influence in that book and knows the history, is on the Historical Commission, but they will be celebrating July twenty-ninth, their seventieth wedding anniversary. So I would like to have a proclamation, uh, that I would like to present to them that day, um, for their, for their marriage and their love for each other, and all the events and the community's, uh, spirit that they have, and the things that they do for our community over and over again. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Soltis?
Yes, Your Honor. Uh, real quick, I just want to shout out to the men and women in blue and black, um, do fantastic job, day in and day out, year after year. Uh, we're very all proud of every one of you, and, uh, we appreciate everything you do. And I drove by Sterling Heights, they have a splash pad, a brand-new one, it is fantastic. Um, you gotta take a look at it. Um, I was totally amazed by it, every time I drive by, and it's completely packed every time, so I think the mayor pro temed on to something, so, that's all, Your Honor.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Gettings, you wanted to jump in with something?
Thank you, Mr. Harwell, or Mayor Harwell. Um, I came from the funeral home before I came to the meeting, and I just wanted to mention that a good leader in our community, involved with Little League baseball for probably twenty to twenty-five years, Tom Asterson passed away, and his funeral is tomorrow, but he was one of the good providers of that organization. Him and his wife spent many a day at the Page Little League Complex, and he'll be sorely missed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Um, I want to thank the police chief for bringing, uh, to our attention the wonderful deeds of service that, uh, the police officers, police reserves, the chaplain, and members of the public contribute to our safety, so thank you, Chief, um, and please thank, uh, those men and women for their, their really courageous work. Um, I also want to thank City Council for, um, you know, maintaining, uh, the public integrity of the city managing, city manager hiring process. Um, this was a very long meeting, but I feel it was necessary to show the public who our options are as we, uh, embark upon this difficult decision. It's a very important decision, so thank you to City Council. And I wanted to make an announcement, there was a, um, a nonprofit group called the Council of Asian Pacific Americans, and they've hosted events in the city of Madison Heights before, and they have, actually, uh, it's a statewide organization, and they selected, uh, Madison Heights to host what they're calling an Asian Festival, and it'll be hosted in Madison Heights on August fourth, um, from eleven AM to six PM. It's over at the UFCW Union Hall on Horace Brown Drive, and they expect to have, they've rented the entire building, they've expected to have about eighty exhibitors from, uh, different, um, uh, eight, uh, different Asian countries and backgrounds, Asian-American groups, there will be dancing, different interesting food, so I, and, uh, clearly, I'll invite the public to attend that, uh, I intend on coming, and also, maybe there's